Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Successor Agency Meeting, March 12, 2024, 5:30 p.m., Special City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum. Could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
If you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we trust. At this time, we will open public comments, and I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the City Council on items that are on the closed session agenda. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in the chambers, please file a speaker card. Remarks will be limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to the closed session agenda items or after the timer has expired. And I receive no written public comments for closed session prior to the meeting. And I have no speaker cards and no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. And do I have a motion to recess to close session?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are reading the recess. Thank you.
I don't think I have.
No, none of you guys. Oh, this is so good. I know. No. You're okay. It's lovely. I don't jump.
Everything every now and then just give me a little. Shut it down.
Restart. Hold on. No, we didn't do anything. We missed the right.
It looks like it included.
Yeah, but it's saying we need to call them. Let me see. We lost him calling. See it on his end. Well, he could see it on his end. He didn't do it.
Usually when it's like that.
That's what it looked like before. But if you read it, actual memos of what it. That you used to call back. It makes me feel like that would be errors. I did. I did. Now I'm nervous to do it. Well. I'm nervous for twenty three to ideal. Four to ideal. To start shooting. Seven. Five.
Should be.
Oh, what's up? Right. Well, if I do. Let's test the. Right, right now, we don't usually have this. When we go on the closed session, usually East阁we don't have running to the closed session. We have Zoom. Like Zoom will be running.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I don't know which meeting. I don't know if it'll test just to see if we can. Feel like it's gonna give us the same thing. We should probably call. Oh. Okay.
Do you usually see something?
It will. I'm like, is it? It'll say.
Yeah. Yes. What's that?
I do not know. Which participant? It's the closed session. Well. It was just saying that participants, because I haven't acknowledged it.
You got it.
It's. Yeah. I wanted, I called him. I'm like, permission to read with the assistant? You know what you're doing. We do, we do. We watched him do it once. We're. We want to see it once. Yeah.
Yeah, he said he's good. So he does some foot stall. He said he's gonna call. He started. He did a white.
Yeah, I didn't want to send something out to the people who have meetings. But I didn't want to. There was, there was the commission at that. So I don't know. It's over because we haven't had the same things. But that was last from another meeting. I haven't concluded either. I don't think the last time, like the last incident when we had the recycle wasn't. It was like. But I want to also remind them, like, number one, conclude your meeting. Conclude your meeting. Number two, do a test meeting before 3:00 p.m. I mean, for an example of that. Yeah. Well, I know, but we happen here anyways. They're not like going home, but forget the meetings. They're not here. So do not call them at like 5:30 asking for help. But concluding a meeting, I think it's big because like I think the East阁is trying to like process the fact that it's not a meeting since like last Thursday. Right. And so it just cut the streak off. So we can keep going all the time. I don't know with that. I don't want to babysit the little check of meetings. Yeah. Did you use that as well? It's. My microphone's not on. Because I think it's from my desk. Do you want to share this, please? Margaret, let's take a look at this. The flowers. Can you see? The G G N B. G N B. At some point, aren't they all the same? It should be. We have some. Not all. It should be these one. It's like passing the other thing. There are some views there. If you're closer to that, I know that will show up when people are doing public comments. So if we don't want to be on, you can probably okay right where you're at. Sure. How close to the meeting is each of those four? Well, that is a. That's an excellent question. We're usually here until sometime 11:30, 10 o'clock. They are streamed on YouTube and our website as well. Again, here for clock. Okay. Well, definitely get to that. Yeah. Although unfortunately, the meeting itself, when you start.
Good evening everyone and welcome to the March 12th, 2024 City Council Successor Agency Meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum. If I could get a roll call please.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Present.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. You can join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America. It is a republic which we serve. which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and in just one.
At this time, we are also reconvening from closed session with nothing to report out at this time, and we will open public comments at this time. Margaret?
At this time, the public president and the chambers are permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under Presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar. Request for future agenda items, new requests, comments for the meetings, detailed future agenda items or business items should be made when that item is called. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. The microphone will be muted when the timer expires. I have one speaker card in person. I'll call on Sal.
Good evening. I'm from Straw Hat Pizza, and I'm also a food truck owner, and I want to touch some bases on the last meeting I was here when there regards to food trucks. I own a brick and motor as well as a food truck, and there's some really things that are really out of balance here. First off, you guys were going over all the stuff with these food truck owners that were here at the last meeting and indulging in the fact of how difficult and so on and forth, and it was kind of like feeling sorry for them a little bit and trying to plow them be small business owner and so on and so forth. And I get that. That's fair. What is a small business owner? Let's define that. It'd be very difficult to define that because everybody in this room would have a different definition. Is it a responsibility to oneself, responsibility to the community, responsibility to the taxation system? There's a lot. Responsibility to your employees. Where do we start? Where do we begin? The food trucks are a different breed, and going into neighborhoods can be quite treacherous, to say the least. You have absolutely no way of controlling it. You're part putting food trucks out there. You don't have any ordinance officers at night, and even if the ordinance officers are at night, you're going to attract all the people who do not want to follow the rules. There are a lot of food truck owners that are upstanding, and they do a great job, and they do what they're supposed to. There's twice as many more that don't want to play by the rules. That's your biggest challenge. Do you want to take taxable income and put it on a food truck versus the brick and motors? How important are brick and motors to you all? Are these food truck self-employed, husband and wife, husband and son? Are they an extension of an existing business like maybe me, sip and scoop and doggies, where our sales are reported through our businesses? If they're self-employed, do they have FICA, FEUD, and they're paying all the taxes that the brick and motors are required to pay? We can go on and on and talk about how to substantiate. Do they have a California resale license and paying their sales tax, and where are they paying the sales tax? Is it in Brentwood? Is it in Stockton, Sacramento? Where are they coming from? These are questions that have to be dialed in and answered. It's long and complicated, to say the least, but we also have the minimum wage increase going after the restaurants and fast food in particular. But just so you know, the Mountain Mikes in Brentwood, the Mountain Mikes in Oakley are franchise owners like me, and they're in a chain of 60 or more. They're responsible for the minimum wage. Just when we started to get out of COVID, in 2023, restaurants started back. Governor Newsom slams this 25% increase in pay on the corporations. Trust me, I'm just involved in this because my employees are now asking, do we get $20 an hour? Because they can go down the street at Roundtable, and Mountain Mikes can get $20 an hour. So you're going to create turnover and chaos. We, as the brick and motors, don't need competitions in neighborhoods right now at this point in time. You're railroading this thing through. You need to pull back the reins, stop it, get some subcommittees, and talk about it for a while, and really find out the nuts and bolts of what can or cannot, and how this could be made. A couple little things. Workman comp insurance is based on total payroll. They don't have workman comp if it's husband and wife. The same thing if they're self-employed, and if they're not reporting their sales, they're not paying the FICA and the FEUD, and all the taxes go as an employer, such as the brick and motor. It gets way deeper and way complicated. The minimum wage went up 96% as of April 1st in the last 10 years. Average blue collar American might get 2% to 3%. We're raising our prices 2% to 5% every six months. You think we really need to be competing with food trucks in neighborhoods at this point in time? I would strongly urge you, calm it down, hold the reins back a little bit. Let me think here. The fallout, the minimum wage and the cost of doing business. We lost Chili's. We lost Applebee's. We're losing Outback. This in Pittsburgh. Roundtables are closing current company stores left and right because of the cost of doing business, and Mountain Mikes has a bunch of them up for sale. There's a lot of craziness going on in the restaurant world. Really, I'm asking you, pull this thing back a little bit. Take your time. Don't rush this stuff through by April 1st and June 1st. You want this place in... City Brentwood's a wonderful community, trust me. You want this place looking like Antioch, trucks, garbage everywhere. We already have a food flea market down on the corner of Lone Tree and Main Street. You see that place on Saturday? Where are the ordinance officers? They're not working on weekends. So please, I tell you, there's a lot to think about. You guys, if anybody wants to call and talk to me more-
The speaker's time has expired.
Thank you, and with respect towards the city council, you guys do a great job. You're under the gun all the time. I would ask that-
The speaker's timer has expired. Your timer, your time has expired?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Please take into consideration what I've said, please.
Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
At this time, we will close public comments and move into Presentations. Item E1 is a presentation from First Five of Contra Costa County, and I'm going to invite Monique Angara, the family and community liaison of First Five Contra Costa, to give a presentation. Miss Angara?
Well, thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be before you, Mayor Bryant and Vice Mayor, and then the city council members. Well, my name is Monique Angara, and I would like to just spend a few minutes just educating the community about the free resources that are available at First Five centers. We are, we have a philosophy at First Five that the parent is the child's first teacher. There is so much that's happening in a child's brain in those first five years, and First Five has established a lot of evidence-based training and classes that enriches the child's life in those early stages. Registration is free for all families in the Brentwood area or the neighboring areas, and this is for all First Fives. We have a First Five center in Antioch, one in Brentwood, and there are three others in the area as well. So, and all that is needed is for a family to be registered. That's it. The wonderful thing, too, is the families can register, and they can choose several classes that they're interested in, and then within a week of classes starting, they will receive an email confirmation so that they know which class they got into. The other thing is, the First Fives are all connected. So if they register at the Antioch location, or register at the Brentwood location, and again at Pittsburgh, they have access for a very diverse range of programs, which is, which helps them to really fill up their child's week for those children who are zero through five, and really have resources available to them that gets them ready for preschool, that gets them ready for kindergarten, and literacy, and things of that nature. The class core areas are basically parent education and support, early education, early literacy, evidence-based training. So a lot of our teachers, all of our teachers are specially trained in this area. And then there are a lot of classes, too, that helps families to recognize when a child has stress in their lives, particularly toxic stress. And so a lot of that falls into our evidence-based curriculum. This is an example of some of the events that we have, and the wonderful thing is, it's my role to connect municipalities to what we're doing, connect other nonprofit organizations so that we're a resource to one another. So we sometimes even have facilitators and teachers and specialists to come into First Five to give special programming, but we also are fully staffed, and we're bilingual as well at our centers. And the wonderful thing, too, is we have something called Triple P, which is a positive parenting program. So that hits on a lot of that toxic stress that I mentioned earlier. So we're educating families to recognize the signs because they are their child's first teacher. So this helps them to really be an authority figure in the child's life, that we can arm them with a lot of that information. Another example is a book launch and author meet and greet. So these are just, just a very slim example of the classes that are available through our program. One of the things, too, is that we have a community resource specialist, and as I mentioned earlier, we have bilingual staff as well, and oftentimes the bilingual, the community resource specialist is bilingual as well. And so this helps to really build a rapport with our families and our parents so that they feel comfortable coming into our center, not only using the classes for the parent and me, the father and me, mommy and me classes, or also to assign their child up for individual learning, but to also feel like they have a specialized advocate who understands their situation. This is a very special program that is near and dear to my heart. It's called our ASQ3 program. So this is ages and stages. I have worked a lot in the Brentwood Union School District and have done a lot of board work with the foundation, the Brentwood Education Foundation, and being this close to a lot of work with families and young children, it really speaks to why we need resources like this that is of no cost to families. So Ages and Stages is a great example of a questionnaire that our trained professionals can help come alongside parents and understand what are the developmental milestones that the child is making or is not making, and then to help to advocate for them and arm them with information so that they can then get the right resources in place for their child for early intervention. And this also helps us and helps our teachers at First Five to be able to recommend the right classes and the right resources for the babies and toddlers enrichment, and all of our teachers are educated in this area. The other thing, too, that I'd like to leave you with is we do have oversight. So the Community Advisory Council is a group of parent leaders, and they are working directly with the community. They are working directly with First Five, and they're closely examining how we're serving the community, how we're designing our programs and our classes, because they do change every month. And so a lot of their feedback and their advice and their surveys from when they're surveying the public and families in the community and families who are already utilizing our services, it arms us with great information to be able to tweak and to pivot as necessary to make sure that our classes are truly tailored to the individuals in which we're serving. Well, unless anyone has any questions, that is my presentation. Thank you so much for your time. It was a pleasure being with you today.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Miss Angara, at this time? Thank you so much for a great presentation. I know that our community, there are very potentially some families that would greatly benefit from First Five that were not aware of it. So thank you so much for bringing this information to us.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank you for having it bilingual. I appreciate that.
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you.
This time, we will move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And I'll begin to my right tonight, Councilmember Mendoza.
Since the last time we met, I attended a meeting with the Latino Caucus, a membership meeting, and it was actually our first meeting of the year with all of our members from the Latino Caucus. That was great, and I was assigned a mentee, which is exciting. I attended the town hall at Somerset, and if you see those on our calendar, please attend. There's always a lot of great questions, and it's nice to have everyone hear each other's questions, and Tim is there to answer them, so it's fantastic. I attended a, on Sunday, there was an immigration help day at Los Medanos over by Trilogy, and it was fantastic. It was, you know, the district attorney's office, Contra Costa Health, Icas del Campo, Faith in Action, and the list goes on and on, but it was for field workers and to get them help through the DA's office, legal help. The consulate was there from the Mexican consulate, so it was a great day, and there was a gentleman who said that for years and years he'd been trying to fix something, and he hadn't been able to, and it was just someone volunteering their time on a Sunday who came down from the consulate who was able to help them. So it was a fantastic day, and attended the Budget Ad Hoc Committee as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. Since our last meeting, I was able to attend a phenomenal event that was put on in San Pablo. It was the East Bay Division Annual Legislative Dinner with the league. Really exciting. Tim Grayson and Lori Wilson spoke. Also was able to attend the June, a couple of Juneteenth meetings. So I had a meeting on February 18th specifically with both, two members of the Forever Me Foundation. I had a conversation on 216, meeting with them to discuss their involvement on Forever, with Forever Me Foundation, two of those calls. We've also had with the city four separate Juneteenth meetings with Parks and Rec staff to try to begin to prepare for the Juneteenth event.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Good evening. Since the last meeting, I attended the Tri-Delta Transit Meeting, a Police Activities League meeting, the Budget Ad Hoc Committee meeting, Farmer's Market, and then just the special city council closed session that we just had.
Thank you. Attended the Cal City's first quarterly department officers meeting in my role with the mayor's and council members department. Some of the discussions were around AI policies. San Jose just set one up, and I shared that with staff. The Cal City's opposition of the Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act, also known as the Taxpayer Deception Act, a lot of planning for the rest of the year, what that was going to look like, the conferences, the educational opportunities, the roundtables, that kind of thing. Attended the mayor's conference. The Taxpayer Deception Act was also mentioned there. Two California Alliance of Local Elected meetings. One of them, one of them was a presentation about the Solano Forever Proposed Community. That's getting a lot of opposition from the community and also actually from elected officials in the area, and then a Q and A session with Senator Ochoa around housing bills. Thank you.
Since the last time we met, I attended a Tri-Delta Board Meeting. I also attended a Rotary City Update Meeting. I attended the funeral of Mr. Renee Deluna, who is the, one of the Citizens of the Year this year. It was wonderfully attended from our community. Also, I assisted in a student tour for students that wanted to learn more about how our city government works, and it's always very exciting to have students and their families and children that aren't old enough to be students yet. And our city staff is very accommodating and kind, and the kids were determined that they all wanted to, at some point, work for the city and run different departments, and so the future looks good, although it might be 25 years from now. Also, I attended the mayor's conference. I had a meeting with several of our veterans groups regarding some of the concerns that they have in the community. I met with the Delta Six, all of the mayors and city managers for the six cities out here in East County, meet together for future planning of economic development, and that's what that is. Also, I attended the Police Activities League Crab Feed, which was really fantastic, and it's a great organization to support a non-community that work with our young people. And that's all I have to report at this time. So we'll move into item G2. Our, I'm sorry, item G2 is to be removed from the consent calendar because we have working wonders with us for this proclamation, but I'm going to ask, is there any other item that you would like to remove from the consent calendar at this time?
Yes. G4, the review and approval of the Housing Element Annual Progress. G5, the second reading, and G6, the two ordinances, the sidewalk and mobile vending.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the other items not pulled?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items G4, G2, G4, G5, and G6.
We have a first, second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is unanimous. It passes. So we'll go to the proclamation, item G2, proclaiming World Down Syndrome Day on March 21st, and we are blessed with the attendance of Mr. Matt- And we are, uh, blessed with the attendance of Mr. Matt Schwab and Working Wonders. So if you could meet me at the podium. It is such an opportunity to, uh, a great opportunity to let our community become aware, if they're not, of Working Wonders and what you do, uh, in our community with our residents. Uh, could you give a little information to the community before we make the presentation of the proclamation as to what you do?
Yeah, sure. Uh, we're a nonprofit here, Brentwood-based. We serve adults with intellectual and related disabilities. And we're, we're very active in the community. We do a lot of work at local businesses downtown. Uh, we have a very, um, engaging arts program. Um, we also do a lot of health and fitness. We play basketball, Delta Valley Health Club, we bowl, we do, um, all sorts of walks around town. And so we're really engaged and the, the idea and the concept of our program is to open doors for individuals, um, that are in our program and let people get a chance to see how amazing they are and what they can do. And they really blow our minds every day with, uh, the remarkable talents. So, you know, we're about six and a half years old. We're expanding. Uh, the phone is literally ringing off the hook of people that want to get in the program. So that's exciting for Brentwood because I, I think it's an asset to the community to have these individuals develop life skills, become more self-sustaining. And then over the long haul, they learn how to take care of themselves when mom and dad get a little bit too old to do it anymore. Suddenly they're ready to, uh, take on the world themselves. So we're excited about that.
Well, at this time, um, it is my honor to present this proclamation. Whereas Down Syndrome remains the most common chromosomal condition diagnosed in the United States, the Centers for Disease Control estimates that about 6,000 babies born in the United States each year have Down Syndrome. Each person with Down Syndrome has different talents and the ability to thrive. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day is the day that Down Syndrome community creates a single global voice advocating for the rights, inclusion and wellbeing of people with Down Syndrome. Whereas on this significant occasion of World Down Syndrome Day, we rally together under the banner of this year's theme, End the Stereotypes, proclaiming our collective commitment to dismantling prejudiced perceptions and fostering a world where individuals with Down Syndrome are recognized for their unique abilities and contributions. Whereas stereotypes like shadows obscure the remarkable individuality of those with Down Syndrome, distorting perceptions and inhibiting progress. Today, we raise our voices to challenge these stereotypes, advocating for a paradigm shift grounding in understanding, grounded in understanding, empathy and appreciation. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize March 21st, 2024 as World Down Syndrome Day and encourages the residents and organizations of Brentwood to strive for a future where the only stereotype associated with Down Syndrome is one of triumph, resilience and limitless potential. If you could join with me here. And just face the community. Okay. And, uh, it is my pleasure to present you with this proclamation. And thank you so much for all of the work that you do, uh, in being an avenue for our families and residents with Down Syndrome to just show what the world of these things are. Thank you. They are. Thank you so much. So at this time, we will go to item G4, review and approval of the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, Progress Report from Calendar Year 2023. Councilmember Mendoza?
I think also Vice Mayor Meyer was going to pull it if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry. Are you sure? My, my thing is it's always, um, informational for our public because I think it's a little bit confusing when we talk about all of these units and I am sharing my screen. So this is what I think is the most important page of the packet when it comes to this item, which is page number 45. And we get targets from the state. The targets are in the green column, which is 402, very low, 232, low, 247, moderate, and then 641 units above moderate that we have to build by 2000, 2031, sorry, 2031. And, um, the scary thing about this RENA cycle, and I talk about all the time, the state taking away our control, is that in four years, so by 2026, we have to have half of all of those units built. So 201, very low, 131, low, about, um, 125 or so, moderate, and then 320 or so, above moderate. If we don't build that, the state will come in and start running our planning department and approve everything. We will not get a say anymore. So that's what I wanted to share on this. I'm glad that we're making some progress, but we have a long way to go. So, um, as a councilperson, I'm going to be pushing for a lot of affordable housing, um, as, and I always like for it to be as zoned, but, um, pushing for affordable housing in order to meet this number, because the last thing we need is the state coming in and from their ivory tower in Sacramento telling us how we should build.
Okay, before I call on the next item, I do.
I think she wanted.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Um, that is perfectly fine. Um, yes, I'd planned on pulling it for different reasons, although I completely agree that spreadsheet is incredibly important. I was also just going to talk about clarifying some of this. And I think really for me, and I think probably all of us, the more we can talk about this publicly so that people understand the, what we're up against, um, which is basically a wall. We don't have a lot of say. We're trying to do our best to maintain the quality of life, um, and, and everything else we love about Brentwood, we're doing our best. Um, so my question was around, there was a section, and, and I mentioned this to Tim prior to this, that, that there was in 2023, building permits were issued for 131 new residential housing units, including ADUs. And this included six very low income, six low income and six moderate income ADU units and 131 above moderate. So the, the math didn't work there, but part of what I wanted was for people to really get an understanding of, are we going to see ADUs popping up in all the backyards? How are we determining that being affordable housing? Really like, for example, if you're looking at a real estate listing, will it say if it's zoned to have an ADU on it, you know, that kind of thing? If you could clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Jennifer Hagan, Senior Planner. So for accessory dwelling units, all single family zones in the city, or actually all residential zones in the city are eligible to have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, so whether an estate listing includes that or not, uh, in accordance with state law, all residential properties are allowed to have at least one accessory dwelling unit on the property. Um, in terms of the affordability levels, at least for this first year, um, the affordability assumptions that we made were based on, um, a study and survey that was done by ABAG in which they provided, um, rent surveys.
Can you spell that out for people, please? Thank you.
Um, ABAG is the Bay Area Association of Governments? ABAG? Um, but it, it's basically our regional cog, um, that governs all of the, um, Northern California Bay Area cities. Um, and so they did, um, a survey on affordability levels for accessory dwelling units in the Bay Area. And based on that survey, what they determined was on average, 30% of accessory dwelling units are listed at a very low income rate, 30% are listed at a low income rate, 30% are at a moderate and 10% are at above moderate. So as part of our Housing Element Update, we were allowed to make those initial assumptions. Um, and as far as, as part of our first success, or, um, annual progress report, we're also allowed to make those assumptions. Moving forward, we're going to have to do some surveys of our own, which we're working, um, again with ABAG to have some surveys going out to make sure and verify that those assumptions are still accurate. Um, but if you build an accessory dwelling unit at this time, they're not deed restricted, they're not required to be at an affordability level, but these are assumptions that we are allowed to make based on our current survey that was done. So when you see we did 18, um, accessory dwelling units last year. And so it kind of worked out that the, the first 30% of that we listed in the low category, 30% we listed in the low and 30% we listed in the moderate.
How often does ABAG update those assumptions?
So ABAG, um, they did a one-time survey as part of the Housing Element. Um, what they are currently working on is an overall survey that cities can opt in, um, in which we can make it a requirement of our building permits or our building permit occupancy for accessory dwelling units. And cities can opt in, in which owners would then go in at the time and put in this survey information. Um, so that is, is the idea moving forward. It has not yet, um, been completed. It is something that they're working on, but the thought would then be that it would be continuously updated throughout this cycle.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. And I think really it was, um, my purpose, I think, is you have a question too when I'm done?
I do.
Okay. My, my purpose in bringing this up is just to really help people understand that, like Councilmember Mendoza said, we do have these numbers we have to reach. So ADUs, as much as people have things and, you know, thoughts about them on one side or the other, are helping us with those numbers. Potentially it can be a mother-in-law unit, that could be someone, um, that they rent to that they don't know. I mean, there's some, there's some guidelines and some, um, standards that we can hold them to. So we're, again, we're, we're toeing along where we can, but this will help us with our overall numbers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Orleman?
Thank you. During the Planning Commission meeting, when we, when you explained the chart that Councilmember Mendoza had put up, it was a little bit different explanation. Can you give us that explanation now?
So the housing elements and our RENA numbers are numbers that are provided to us by the state, um, through ABAG and, and other, um, state entities. Um, we are required as part of the Housing Element to provide housing that can achieve those numbers. Um, we also have to provide an analysis of constraints, uh, or to identify any constraints, um, that would preclude us from doing those. Um, so we, we have to look at all of that. Those can be cost constraints, city governmental permitting costs, um, zoning constraints, things like that. So we have to identify all of that and we have to verify that we can indeed achieve that. The city is not, um, in itself required to actually construct those units. What I, I believe Councilmember Mendoza was referring to is there is a Senate bill, or it's, um.
SB 423.
Okay.
Co-written by Tim Grayson.
Yeah, and so there, there are some different Senate bills moving forward, um, as well as SB 35, which looks at it, I think on, on every two year, that could potentially have some impacts on, um, the benchmarks. Um, so the one that she was referring to would be halfway through. SB 35 looks at it on usually a quarter, so every two years. Um, and I think that is if you meet 10% of your RENA, um, and then there's some requirements that it would be automatically approved if you have 50% affordability levels. Um, but there are some, some benchmarks where it would take away some of the city's, um, jurisdiction, some of our jurisdiction or discretion to approve projects, um, based on the affordable, affordability levels of the projects.
Any further comments, questions? Okay, at this time then, I'm going to go back to item G2 and move approval on item G2.
So moved.
We have a first and a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And item G4, do I have a motion on item G4?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, item G5?
So this one I pulled just because we, this is a red line, which is some amendments. Why are we doing repeal and replace instead of just amend? Again, I, it's just, I can't wrap, we've done that a couple of times. Is there a legal reason or is it just a nice to have?
For item G5, and I'll defer to community development if they want to address, oh, Jennifer's nodding yes and I can chime in afterwards if necessary.
So as part of the density bonus ordinance update, or there's actually two different ordinances, or two different chapters that are being updated. One is the actual density bonus, which is completely, um, throwing away the old one and having a new one. There is not a, a red line with, um, attachment A1. Um, the definition section of the affordable housing is a red line. So in the, in the title, I believe it is repeal and replace the density ordinance and then amend the affordable housing ordinance. Um, because the state density bonus law, um, the new ordinance that we're putting in place is nothing like our old one altogether. We're getting rid of the old one. It, it really is a complete new ordinance. So it is repealing and replacing that, um, but it is amending the affordable housing ordinance definition. So this staff report actually has a little bit of both.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, and that, and that's what I was thinking, that it went from three buckets to four buckets, right? I just didn't see the buckets in the agenda packet, so I wasn't even sure if it was the same thing. I got a little confused on that. Um, so what we are repealing and replacing is that we used to have low, very low and moderately low. And now we have, what do we have now? I can't remember.
So we are repealing and replacing the density bonus ordinance, which, um, talks about the state law and if you have, you know, certain density provisions within a housing ordinance. So that we are completely getting rid of.
Okay.
It is the second one, the affordable housing, that before our moderate income didn't have, um, a floor. And so the moderate was, oh, actually it was, um, the low didn't have a floor. So the low was inclusive of the very low. And so we're actually just in that definition. We're modifying it and amending it. So now it will be its own category.
Thank you. And I appreciate it because these laws are very, very confusing to keep up with them. So thank you very much.
Okay, is there any questions, conversation regarding this? Do I have a motion on G5?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Excuse me, mayor, if I could just read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood Approving a Zoning Tax Amendment to the Brentwood Municipal Code, RZ 23-005, which would repeal and replace Chapter 17.720 Density Bonus Program to Implement State Density Bonus Law and Amend Section 17.725002's Definitions of the Affordable Housing Ordinance.
Thank you. Uh, item G6?
So I pulled this one because, um, I've gotten a lot of calls and I've talked to a lot of people this week about this. I, I'm okay with the sidewalk vending portion of it. I think that we need a lot more conversation on the mobile vending portion of it. You know, looking at other cities, ours is very different. Um, just hearing the feedback from people who are pro and people who are against, I think we still need to have some conversations with our businesses because I'm afraid that we might be hurting some people, some businesses, when that's not our intention. So I was wondering if we could, uh, like, again, the sidewalk portion is fine, but the mobile portion may be under maybe a lot, we could bring in people who have brick and mortars and food trucks and have a little bit more conversation to make sure that we're not being detrimental, detrimental to their business. So I don't know if that's something that we can talk about.
Uh, I do have a question for our legal staff. Katie, is it possible to approve on a second reading only part of it?
So yes, you can. I was looking at how this is set up and they are set up as two separate ordinances. So you can take action on just one and not the other, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I wrote down a bunch of questions on this too. I was receiving calls myself and I think there was so much information and, and at the time, I remember bringing up the fact that I thought we should do a town hall on it, um, because I, I feel like there's so much to take in that, that I was concerned about missing a few things too. So having heard from a few people, I would like to, to slow that down a bit and, and do a little bit deeper dive into this as we sometimes do, to make sure that all of the components are clear to everyone involved and everyone who's impacted by this. So yes, I would, I would support that.
Yes, that's me. My light's on, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So I would have to agree. And the reason why that I'm agreeing is because I think that our motion, and you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, was that we bring this back to discuss further issues that came up points of contention. So I think that it is something, even with the public comment tonight, I think we take very seriously what everyone has to say. And, um, I would have liked a lot more time to delve in how we can make this, uh, work better. So again, um, I think so many people can be potentially affected, some of our businesses that we have on the pros and, and cons of this side, that I think I'd like to bring this back, um, later on. And so I would, you know, make a motion for us just to approve item number one and not approve the, with the sidewalks as, as a councilmember Mendoza stated. approve with the sidewalks, as Councilmember Mendoza stated.
So I've had several people approach me and ask questions about the ordinance. I pulled it back up and was trying to read it and was slightly confused while trying to reiterate what I was reading off of my agenda. So us taking a little bit longer to look at this may not be a horrible thing to do.
Okay, so we have a motion on item G6. If you could restate your motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead tonight and vote on the following, and I'll go back so that I'm clear. The second reading of the first ordinance as to the regulation of non-motorized sidewalk vending along public sidewalks. And I would actually, the second part of that motion would be that I defer to a future date, the discussion by council to reconsider our decisions on the mobile vending from motorized vehicles on public and private property and declaring the ordinance exempt from sequo.
I'll second that, but is it better for you to have two motions, separate them both completely, or is it okay one? Doesn't matter?
It would be cleaner procedurally if you did it as two, and that would give Margaret a chance to read the title of the one you are voting on, and then you could bring back the second half later. Thank you.
All right, little city attorney we got here, thank you very much. All right, let me restate my motion. Yes, Mr. City Manager.
As you consider your second motion, is there any direction the council would like us to come back with to help educate the public better about what the ordinance is trying to accomplish? We also have it on the agenda tonight. We can certainly answer any questions the council or public have as well.
In ad hoc, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wrote down what, the part of the staff report that was talking about direction to staff, return with a detailed staff report on regulations for long-term mobile vending facilities, with future staff report adding with the four-day regulation, removing it from the draft ordinance, discuss fees, it would be part of the permit for council to further discuss, provide information on a potential grant program for the fees. And I had asked about doing some sort of a town hall, even if it's in Zoom form, for people that are impacted by this. Those are all things that were in the staff report, but I was a little, myself, I was also a bit confused about when those things happen, so if we can make those part of the motion tonight to make sure that those are part of this next step and this next discussion.
To make the second motion, I'll make the first one. And when she makes that motion, if she so accepts, I would ask, just to piggyback on your question, Tim, is there a timeframe with you understanding what's coming up in the coming months, that would be a sweet spot for us to discuss this, considering all of the additions that would be in the ask? Go ahead.
And that's kind of why I said, let's put it in our ad hoc, because I think between Chairperson Roberts, you, and myself, I think we could probably get an ad hoc versus having to have all five of us there. Might be sooner, but I don't know how y'all feel about that.
Could I wait in for one second and ask for Alexis's help? Because my recollection is that the mobile vending ordinance, as before you this evening, looks at mobile vending as a truly mobile issue around the city, and what council had directed to bring back for later consideration was long-term mobile vending issues that were going to be included as part of the zoning ordinance update, because those were land use issues, as opposed to these more short-term uses of public streets. So I'm going to defer to Alexis, but I think that's what the staff report was referring to.
Correct. So we had highlighted in the first reading staff report that this ordinance as before you tonight is really for the short-term mobile vendors that need to keep moving, and we took out, you took out the limit of four days every 30 days with the expectation that we would be coming back, and the zoning ordinance update with some unique regulations regulating the sort of semi-permanent, longer-term food trucks. So that was our understanding, that those longer-term regulations would come back at a future staff report as part of that, you know, comprehensive zoning ordinance update that we're bringing back to you around June. So we talked about the timing and the time, there was a concern that this ordinance being in effect June 1st might not overlap or might take place before those new regulations could be adopted. So that's my understanding why that letter M on those four days was removed. We can bring that back in a different way, we're, you know, that was just the idea at the time, because we are doing, already doing zoning ordinance update to Title 17. If you want to have a more comprehensive discussion about all of it, the long-term and the short-term, we can certainly bring that back as one item to LUD or council, we're flexible. We just wouldn't necessarily be able to put the Title 17 portion of that together as quickly as just bringing back the short-term mobile vending, because we haven't started working on those regulations quite yet. Is that, is that helpful?
Yeah, and I think that is, to be honest, I think that's part of what's so confusing about this, and, you know, I recall, of course, the four days versus the long-term, but I think even that night, it was a little, we were unsure about which, exactly which part of it was gonna, taking effect immediately versus coming back to us. I still felt like the town hall, regardless of it, was going to be good for either one of those situations.
Sure.
But, so thoughts on doing this as a more collective, four-day and long-term?
I think coming back in June would be great, but prior to the June, I like the idea of either coming to LUD or town hall. And I'll leave that to you all to decide what you think would be best, but yeah.
And Councilmember Mendoza already mentioned that potential of going to LUD. What is the timing on when that could happen?
It's once a month, right? Yeah, and it just depends on what you want to be in that LUD meeting, so if you want the, I'm sorry. I would like to have a chance for, like, the gentleman who showed tonight, I think Vicki's here, Vivian, everyone who, I mean, this is our livelihood, right? These are our Brentwood businesses. Come and talk to us at LUD or a town hall, and let's work through it and find the best ordinance for our city, and also benchmarking what other cities do. I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions, so I'm uncomfortable passing this tonight. I just, I'm not sure it's the right thing right now.
And I think what we're hearing is concerns about both, short-term and long-term.
Yeah, it's both. It's not just the, yeah. Certainly, so the reason, I think it helps to think of it as permanent and temporary, right? So the reason the temporary is in a whole separate section of the code, because it's not a permanent land use that we would regulate as such, right? So if you think of a permanent mobile, a permanent vending facility has completely different issues, more akin to if you built a new business that was going to be stationary for, you know, years, right? And so that's why that was in Title 17. So I understand the confusion, because the word "mobile," and these aren't impermanent structures. It is very confusing, and I understand. So we can bring the whole package back, we can do outreach to the same folks that we did at the last meeting. We have a very long, you know, mailing and email list. We can certainly do that for a LUD meeting. If you want us to benchmark other cities, please tell us which ones, because every city has a version of a mobile vending ordinance, right? And so there's a whole universe of ideas and options out there, so if there's particular ones you would like us to benchmark, we can certainly prepare that for LUD. Otherwise, you know, I can just do the surrounding communities, Oakley, Antioch, Pittsburgh, or Contra Costa County. So it would be very helpful if we could narrow down who we want to benchmark, and we can bring a package to LUD. April is a bit soon, we already have something on LUD for April, so probably the May LUD meeting.
I think May would be good for LUD, and then I would actually ask that for LUD, one, benchmarking our neighboring cities would be great, because I think it gives us the idea of what East Contra Costa County is doing. Those are going to be some of the same vendors that are going to be using our site. Councilmember Mendoza saying Livermore as well. But I'd also add for it to be, for the LUD meeting, to ask the call of your question, that it be for both the long-term and the short-term.
And figure out when the town hall happens.
And so that would be my question for council. So my understanding of the town hall idea was we were going to potentially adopt new regulations and then have a town hall to explain those. So would you want a town hall separate and before the LUD meeting?
No, I think your thoughts about doing the outreach and making sure that everybody understands this is another chance to both learn and express yourself is a good thing. Like, as long as people have that understanding, and then once everything is implemented, you're absolutely right, that is when I was thinking about doing the town hall.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that.
To help people understand the process a bit more, yeah. Question on this, too, just that, if there is a food truck going into a neighborhood for an event, temporary, the food trucks that go to Veterans Park, is that considered also, even though they're, it's not consecutive four days? So how, what does that look like?
So any food trucks that park on our city streets, not on city property, are regulated by the current mobile vending ordinance and have time limits and have to move every so often. So that would not change, that ordinance is still in place until we replace it. Under the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you tonight, they would still be able to park on city streets with time limits, so two hours in residential, was it four in commercial? I can't remember off the top of my head. So there's time limits still, but you can still park on city streets.
Thank you.
But the ordinance as it applies does not apply when someone is parking base, using a special use permit, correct?
Correct.
It would not take away one of their days.
No. So if you're associated with an event that has a temporary use permit on private property or a special permit through parks for a special event, that's a separate process, you can stay longer.
Yep.
We're just talking about the folks who are just roaming around town as a normal course of business, not a special event.
Got it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. No, we don't.
So I'll go for mine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would feel remiss if we didn't just make sure there weren't any unintended consequences of what our current enforcement rules are today, absent approval of this ordinance. So if Robbie, who does the enforcement with her staff, and Alexis have any other things we haven't discussed, please speak now.
We have an ordinance in place, it's just not as adequate as we would like and not as enforceable as we would like. So people would continue, hopefully, to comply with the procedures that are, the regulations that are in our municipal code today. We would just prefer to have those replaced with some more robust and more enforceable regulations.
So I'll make my motion. Prior to making that motion, I wanted to, since we have a lot of people here that I did see that night, some of our mobile vendors and other vendors, I would like to say that the LUD meeting we're speaking at will be the May 13th LUD meeting, and that meeting does not start at the same time as city council, so please update your calendars as to date and time, to check the city's website to make sure you're in attendance, we'd love to hear your voice. That being said, my motion would be the following, that we approve the second reading of one ordinance, that is to regulate non-motorized sidewalk vending along public sidewalks.
We have a first.
I'll second that.
Margaret?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amending the definition of peddler in Section 5.48020 and adding Chapters 5.64 to the Brentwood Municipal Code, imposing regulations on sidewalk vending in compliance with Senate Bill 946, amending Section 7.02.210 regarding vendors and parks and determining the ordinance to be exempt from sequo.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Have another motion.
That's me, but it's different. Councilmember Mendoza, if you have this down, that's perfectly fine with me, because I'm not sure about what I have.
I would make a motion to continue the mobile, the mobile vending for motorized vehicles and public and private property, to continue that until a future date, and continue this to have discussion during our next, no, not our next LUD meeting, but the one after LUD meeting, to refine our guidelines.
I would make a friendly amendment to have that during the June council meeting, where we're going to discuss the, what is it called?
The zoning update?
Zoning update, yeah.
Yeah, so that's tentative June, just, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Just a quick question for clarification. In addition to continuing this item, which is just second reading, you also want staff to reopen the item? It's not just a continuation of the second reading.
Yeah, no, we are reopening it to refine the ordinance.
Are we repealing and replacing? I'm just kidding.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving into item H1, Business Items. The next item is related to the former Davis Campsite Historical Display Project, and Bruce Mulder, Parks and Recreation Director, will present.
Bruce? All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This item is regarding a project to provide a historical interpretive display along the McCollumee Trail that overlooks the former Davis Camp site. This is in response to an agenda item from Vice Mayor Meyer to have the city spend staff time and resources on the installation of a historical commemorative plaque at the site of the former Davis Camp location. Staff reviewed the kinds of interpretive areas that we currently have in our park system and thought that the interpretive signs at Sun Gold Park are a great example of something that would work really well for this project. Staff met with members of the East Contra Costa Historical Society to review a plan for this project, and tonight we are asking the council to approve the layout, the amenities, and the location, so we can move forward.
I'm sorry, Bruce, can you put it up on the screen so everyone can see?
It's in your staff report, I'm sorry, I don't have the design.
I meant for the audience and the people watching.
It's on page, we're pulling it up, 118. Darren, would you be able to help pull that up? So I'll just describe here, so this is the proposed location that you see on the screen here. The location is on the corner of, or just to the east along the McCollumee Trail, and it is to the east of the corner of Brentwood Boulevard and Sunset Avenue, and you can see it's just to the south of the trail there, where it will overlook the Davis Camp location. So the purpose of this project is to establish a place to highlight the historical significance of the Davis Camp history of Brentwood, and I just mentioned the location. The amenities are five interpretive panels, and these are designs and information that will be provided by the Historical Society. It'll have decomposed granite surfacing, a park bench, and a trash receptacle, and it'll be located on East Bay Municipal Utility District property, so we have to get the right-of-way, it's on that right-of-way, so we have to work with them to get the encroachment permit. And the design will be similar to the designs that we have at our current Sun Gold Park. The next steps in this project would be the approval. If we get the approval this evening to move forward, then we will apply for that East Bay Mud permit, and we will work with the Historical Society to design the panels. Installation will be done by our Parks Maintenance Staff, and we are looking at completing the project once we get that permit and the completed panels and the supplies needed to move forward. So that completes a brief presentation of the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any clarifying questions of staff at this time?
Yes. One of the easy ones to clarify, the $20,000 that is to be allocated to this project, where would that come from?
So we don't, this is not a funded project, we don't have a budget for this $20,000, so it will have to be absorbed in the budget. We worked with finance, and I believe it's money that can be found in one of the admin funds that we have, so it'll be, it will be absorbed in the current budget that we have.
Thank you. Can you confirm that members of the East Contra Costa Historical Society were able to enter the structure, and if they were able to take anything worth, that had any kind of a historic value?
They did enter the structure. I don't know that there was a whole lot there for historical value. Darren, do you have a recollection of the specifics, or you pointing at me?
I can chime in. Alan? Great question. Yes, the Historical Society, we had a pre-bidders conference, I would say, sometime in January, where we invited the Historical Society to come and enter the building. From what I understand, they were, they went inside, I'm not sure if they took any photos, but they did not come away with anything from inside the building.
Thank you. There was mention of shade trees and benches, if feasible. What would make them feasible?
So that is if we can get permission from the East Bay Municipal Utility District to plant trees on the site. If that is the case and it's feasible, then we will go ahead and plant some trees that will add some shade there. That'll be part of that encroachment permit process, finding out what we can do there. We can't have any permanent structures, so it's possible we might be able to provide some trees, but we would need their permission.
Thank you. Can you confirm for the public, the building that is currently there, is that the exact same building that was there when the Davis Camp was active?
That, I'm not sure.
There's no historical significance. It sits in the same place, there might be some framing that's part of it, but as you look at historical pictures, it's changed significantly, there's been significant improvements, and we have, we have a person who has taken multiple pictures, we've seen it on social media.
Yes, and I would love for him to make a public comment when it's time.
And so I would say, no, there's no historical significance of the building today as it was in the past.
Thank you. There was a question around... There was a question around zoning of the neighboring parcels, and a question about whether there was a way to make sure that anyone sitting in this reflective historic area would not be faced up against a wall if there is a building built on that connecting parcel. And I realize that some of this was discussed in the closed session meeting tonight, so we can't discuss all of it. But I would like to know what, like if there's potential for setbacks, some sort of division between, would there be the necessity of a noise, a sound wall, that kind of thing? To the extent that we're able to talk about that.
There will be some space between the historical markers that are the display interpretive area that is here and the property line. So even if a sound wall or a building were to be put up, this interpretive center would still tell the story of the historic area of Davis Camp. And there will be some space in between this area and the property line.
Thank you.
And to add on to that, just if you could put the picture back up of the parcel again. There are a bunch of trees for the public to see that separates the area. I know we're going to be removing some of those trees when we tear down that location, but just for the public's view, what gave me a little solace was that there were trees behind it.
Yeah, currently, yeah. Thank you, and thank you for pointing that out.
Councilmember Pearson, I just want to interrupt that. Alan, as part of the approval of the removal of the building, I also believe all of these trees, these trees are right on the property line, and they'd be removed as part of the demo. Is that correct, Alan?
That is correct, Darren. There may be some trees that may not be on the property. Those would remain, but I don't have that quantified just yet.
It's hard to tell where the trunks are in this photo. Okay, when will the building come down?
We are working with the contractor to get the contract finalized. We hope to have the building demoed and completed by this spring.
Okay. And if approved, what is the timeline for the project? When could it potentially start and end?
For the interpretive center, we are looking at moving forward with this encroachment permit and working with the Historical Society on these interpretive displays. So once we get those, and we get the encroachment permit, and we get the supplies, we can move forward. So I anticipate this will be done in 2024, during this year, when we can move these things forward. And it'll be done by our Parks Maintenance Staff, so we will also have to schedule it within the timeframe of their work schedule as well.
Okay, that's all my questions. I'll have statements later. Thank you.
I have one question. Why do we have to remove the trees?
I would say there's no requirement that requires the removal of the trees. We did work with the Historical Society, and the only tree that they saw that, based upon historical photos, that might have any type of historical significance is the tree that sits in the center, which is a eucalyptus tree, which would be very difficult to maintain or keep in order to see the project develop. As we walked around with the Historical Society, it was determined that most of these, the word that was used were privates, that these are volunteer trees that have came up. And as part of the approval, I think it was at your last council meeting, there was this bid alternative that was called out, that talked about removing the trees from the site as part of that effort.
Did the staff report talk about shading, though, from the trees over this area, so there won't be any shading?
It did not talk about shading. It just talked about removing the trees. It was a bid alternative. I believe it came back at $8,000 or $9,000, considering the price was so low. Staff made the recommendation to include that as part of the project, and that was called out in the staff report.
Can we choose to keep the trees? Can you tell we like trees?
So I'll talk from an economic development side. I believe whoever develops the site is probably going to come in and remove the trees and is going to look for a clean site. They're not oak trees. They're no trees of any type of significance. Recently, a tree just to the east, to the right of that yellow line, actually fell because it's diseased. We have not had our arborist out there, but these trees have not been maintained. They have, you know, I'm not an arborist. I'm not the one that's going to make the determination, but I... The idea was, is that all the trees would be removed, so that it would provide an opportunity for the future development. And then, as Bruce mentioned, they'll work with East Bay Mud to try to install whatever type of trees or shade that they can provide if they would allow it.
Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions of staff? At this time, we will open public comments. Margaret?
At this time, the public president and the chambers are on Zoom, are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment from those in the chambers first, then those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item after the timer has expired. I have no speaker cards in the chambers. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Cinziana. Cinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I do have the same question. Why remove trees? This is something like, these trees have been there forever. It's very hard to grow trees in our area unless they're very native trees, and, you know, they come at, planting new ones come at a very big expense. We all possibly try to grow trees, and we know how hard it is and how expensive. Also, they're not real property, so why get really hung up on removing trees? Unless it's really demanded by any laws or anything that, you know, I mean, it's nature. Why don't we treasure nature, let it be? They're diseased, and why is the arborist not involved in this? Anyway, the way the display looks like right now, I think it's really nice. It's well-designed. However, I do see a need for some benches or some seating area where people can just sit down, meditate. The newcomers to our city, they won't even know what that means. But the older residents who really understand and know exactly what that spot signifies for our city and its history, they would want to go and visit and contemplate and sit down and like really take a moment to reflect on the history and again, significance of the spot. So I do believe for that purpose, seating should be included in the design. And also, the placement of it, I think it will be more impactful at the corner of Brentwood Boulevard and Sunset, as opposed to further down on the trail where people just kind of run and do their exercise. I live in the area. I know exactly what people do on that trail. So again, I do believe even for visitors, it will be more impactful to have some sort of signage at least at the intersection and mark the point or direct the visitors in some way to that respective area. So those will be my comments. And again, I want to make sure my statement that I am against taking down the trees unless, you know, it's legally required or they become a nuisance according to Brentwood Municipal Code. I would love to keep those trees. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public comments, move into council discussion. Councilmember Pearson?
I really love the design, and I'm really excited, and thank you to Parks and Rec and to the Historical Society for all the hard work. I'm kind of sad I don't see Mary Casey Black here today, because I'm always happy with what she has to say during public comment regarding this specific topic. That being said, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the staff report did state we'll have not only the display, but there will be benches and a trash receptacle. So, yeah. So there will be, to Ms. Toldor's request, there will be bench spacing for people to sit and reflect and do what they need to do near the space.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, I kind of went into some details of questions that maybe not everybody is concerned about, but Our Town Brentwood made a post about this, I want to say maybe a month or two ago, and I was told that over a period of time, there were 121,000 views of this post, more? 122,000 views of this post. So obviously, not every single one of them is Brentwood residents, because we don't have that many. But this area impacted a lot of people that are still connected to the area. So there was a lot of, a lot of comments. I don't recall the number, but there was some concerns about the building and about the historic value of anything in it and about the design, just all of it. So I really felt it was important to dig in a little bit deeper and...
One, the city council wants us to work with the Historical Society. The Historical Society thought it would be best away from the corner because they thought it distracted from all of the cars driving by, where someone might be able to sit, really relax, even though there's a driveway. We had an extensive conversation. Steve was also there as we went through that. And then the other thing was, city council actually gave direction to not put a marker on the corner, but rather have an interpretive piece placed, so that something that's more significant, you would see it. Obviously, there's some height to these presentations and to, you know, where cement or, you know, decomposed granite would be placed. And so this was at the request of the city council that it be placed more than just a marker. You wanted something where someone could sit and actually know that some was occurred. If there's the discussion related to a marker with directions to it, that could also be included.
Okay. I wanted to say too, I really appreciate that staff went the extra mile to make sure that Our Town Brentwood and the Historical Society were involved in this conversation and that they were given the chance to go into the building and make sure there was nothing of value, historic value there, that they could take and use with. Wanted to also mention that the society is also part of the design process. They're giving input in that as well. So they've been involved with this process from the get-go, as soon as it was moved forward. And I think, I have to say, I just think staff is doing a very good job of making sure that their expectations are being met, that their knowledge about history is guiding this process. So thank you very much for that. I know there's other questions, so I'll make a motion in a minute.
No, I just want to say thank you to you, Vice Mayor, because I think you're the one that brought this forward to Steve, because you worked really hard on this, too, and to the Historical Society. I think it's important that we don't forget what Brentwood is about, and I appreciate staff spending the time on it. Is there any, like I saw one bench. Should we have two, or is one, do you guys think? I was thinking about that, and then she mentioned the seating, or Cinziana did.
We have plans for one. We can look at that based on the funding that we have, if we can afford to put another bench in. Benches are about $2,000 apiece with installation. But if we have it within the budget, we can take a look at that.
Okay, that was it. And thank you so much again, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Orlandz?
Yeah, most everything has already been said. Thank you, Vice Mayor Meyer, for bringing this forward and the amazing work that everybody has done, not only staff, but working with all the nonprofits in the city to put this project together. First thing, when I opened it up and started looking at this on the agenda, first thought in my head, what a beautiful project. What a beautiful memory. Having been to Davis Street on calls 20 some-odd years ago, when it was still active, and then being able to see this move all the way forward means a lot. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further conversation. Do I have a motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to approve the layout, amenities, and location of the interpretive historical display for the former Davis Camp site. With an addendum, to please focus on trying to keep as many trees as possible, to look at the possibility of two benches as opposed to one, and if it is not possible to keep all of the trees, to let East Bay Mud know that that is a priority for us. If we want people to sit there in the middle of summer and contemplate, we need to give them some shade. And I think that's it.
We have a first.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Moving on to item H2. This next item is related to the city's 2024 Juneteenth event. And TN, when will our recreation manager will present? TN?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. TN Nguyen, Recreation Manager. Tonight, city staff spring back to update about our Juneteenth event. City staffs met and connected multiple meetings with Councilmember Pearson to discuss and plan this year's Juneteenth event. Through these meetings and much work led by Councilmember Pearson, event details are shown to you on this screen. The city is planning an event on Wednesday, June 19, 2024, at City Park and in downtown Brentwood. The event is expected to be four hours, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's a list of activities on the screen that city staff and council member has been planning. A couple of those items include a Freedom Walk downtown to learn about Black history, food and craft vendors, live music entertainment, and it's expected to be a family-friendly event for the whole Brentwood community. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that there was some intention with having it downtown in City Park, so that we can have our visitors and community use our local downtown businesses, as well as utilize the playground at City Park and the splash pad, which will be on, because it is expected to be a warm time in June. As mentioned in the staff report, there's an expected budget, and I'll go into that in a little bit. I did want to clarify here that this is the first time we're hosting a Juneteenth event led by the city. So estimated costs and estimated attendance is difficult for city staff to provide at this time. City staff's been working closely with Councilmember Pearson to ensure the event is properly celebrating the Juneteenth holiday and is event for the whole Brentwood community. With that, I'll pause and ask if Councilmember Pearson would like to share any additional information about the event.
Sure, I'd like to clarify some of the things that were in the staff report and just kind of give a narrative of the things that we've done since our last meeting here. So since our last meeting, the council made an approval of us to move forward with the Juneteenth event. There was some confusion about the amount that was approved. The amount was $30,000 approval, and also giving me direction to move forward immediately due to the, that time was of the essence. Part of the direction was also to meet with the Forever Me Foundation to discuss their involvement in the process. Some of the considerations were to discuss with the Forever Me Foundation a partnership, a consulting agreement, or other forms of compensation for them to be, with a maximum approval amount of $5,000. After our meeting on the prior council meeting, I want to clarify the meetings that I did have with Forever Me Foundation, because there is a bit of confusion. One is on February 16, 2024. I made a phone call to Velma Wilson. It was a one-minute meeting to schedule a time for me to speak with she and Clarissa Wilson, who is over the Forever Me Foundation regarding the agreement or what their understandings were. On that same day, I spoke with both Clarissa Wilson and Velma Wilson for about 38 minutes, and we spoke more about the difference between a consulting agreement, a sponsorship, and a partnership. After that date, I was informed by Clarissa Wilson that she needed to meet with her board to figure out what they would like to do, because she couldn't make the decision on her own, and that she would contact me after their meeting on February 18. On February 18, I received a phone call back from Clarissa Wilson. We spoke for 18 minutes, in which she asked for further clarification about what a sponsorship and the difference between a sponsorship, the partnership again, and the consulting. There was also confusion that Ms. Wilson expressed to me that she was under the understanding that we had approved for her to receive the $30,000 for her entity to move forward to plan Juneteenth, and I clarified that that was not council's direction at the time. And she informed me that she would get back to her board and talk to me. That same afternoon, I spoke with Velma Wilson from Forever Me Foundation for 40 minutes on the phone. During that time, I again clarified with Ms. Wilson my understanding of what council's direction was with me. And then after I didn't hear back from anything back from them within days, our city manager, Tim Ogden, sent an email further clarifying our understandings, further clarifying the fact that despite they had submitted an application, that they had not made a down payment and therefore did not have an approval to use the park on that day, and to get back to us regarding where they wanted to. We had not heard back from them until a staff report went out. The staff report on this agenda item went out on March 7 of this year. And on March 8, we received an email from Clarissa Wilson, again, asking for further direction, stating that she actually wanted decision-making power, and also stating for further clarification and that they had still an interest, in which I responded with the email and Mr. Ogden responding with the email. Since the meeting, I will say that there have been extensive meetings with the city between myself and Parks and Recreation. And I would like to take this time to say that I am over the moon happy with where we've gone. My heart is full with the fact that for my first time sitting here on this dais, this has been the most harmonious. It feels like a multi- It feels like a multicultural fair. And I'm so excited. And I couldn't have done anything that we were talking about without the amazing work by none other than our city manager, Tim Ogden, than our Director of Parks and Rec, Bruce Mulder, with our manager, Tien, with the help of Amanda and with Stacy. And I appreciate you all so hard. They go so hard that in the paint that no one ever sees behind closed doors. And they are an amazing team. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity to sit at the table to have a discussion. Even though council gave me direction to move forward, to have decision-making as to how this event goes, we are working collectively to make decisions in the room. And they've brought in their expertise in the room, some levels of expertise that I don't even have that they can share with me to make this an outstanding event. I'd also like to say on this record that since that meeting, this, none of these, this planning is had in a silo. And so what's really important to me is that this event be such an outrageous outpouring in our community that we involve as many of our nonprofit organizations and our business in it. And so one of the ideas that I initially had that the Parks and Rec team thought was amazing was this Freedom Walk. So I would like the opportunity to share that. I had started reading during Black History Month so much more histor, history about African-Americans, what happened post-Reconstruction, what happened during Jim Crow laws. And one of the things that I ran across, and I'm sad that Vicky Little is gone, was why African-Americans were not allowed to use, to have vanilla ice cream. And one was that vanilla was too pure that African-Americans could not have it. So during post-Reconstruction, the only thing they can have was to have vanilla ice cream only if they added butter and pecans. And that's why it had became a fan favorite among African-Americans. After seeing that, I thought, how can we incorporate our businesses in the city of Brentwood where they don't feel like we're putting tables or trucks in front of their businesses, but we really listen to the voice of those businesses in downtown? And I thought, how about in every single one of those businesses that wants to participate, we put a historical fact about African-American history in that business, connecting to that business and actually offering something that the DBC does where it's a stamp program to go in there to encourage people who come to the Juneteenth event to patronize this event and to spend more time going into these businesses. So for example, don't know if Vicky would be interested. I did talk to Amy Tilly about it to see what the temperature was because she is sometimes the pulse of our businesses. In a store like Sip and Scoop, we'd have a signage and the city would prepare those signs to tell that historical narrative and also to tell that African-Americans created the first ice cream scoop. How cool would that be to have as you walk into Sip and Scoop on Juneteenth? And I would like to call that street, that part of the street, the Freedom Walk. I would like all of our residents to walk the Freedom Walk to learn something more about the historic narrative of African-Americans. But what's most important to me when we talk about some of the vendors in the food truck to make it a real multicultural experience, one that unifies and builds. So some of the people that I've talked to and I've held back until we get our structural planning in place, but that I continue to want to reach out to after council's decision tonight. I have spoken to Amy Tilly at the Downbound DBC. I've reached out to the school districts because even though the kids will be fresh out of school, I would love as much participation from our youth that we can have. I've chatted with Sean McCully about the participation of harvest time. Agriculture is such a huge component of the history of our, of all of our people. Every single one of us, no matter of our race and creed, ethnicity, any culture, agriculture has been big. And also, I would like to, I've been reached out by and intend to fully further the conversations from the Brentwood Press, Contra Costa County News, the Chamber of Commerce, even Danny Dorman. I appreciate you, Mr. Dorman, for the email that you sent. I know we always don't see eye to eye, but I'm grateful for your email. And I want to speak further with the Rotary, with 4H, Seraptimus, the Historical Society and with Powell. I think, yeah, and the Alliance. Thank you. The Alliance and the Lions Club and the Alliance and any other organization in the city of Brentwood because I think that this could be such an amazing opportunity for us to unify. That, that being said, I don't think I have anything else to add but that I think one of the things that I've presented to anyone, and I want to make it very clear because the discussion is going to be about Forever Me and Errol Jackson. When I initially went to our meeting, and Parks and Rec can say this, can, will understand that I've said this, it was never a either/or. Because there has been talks that I'm trying to promote one organization over another. It was a both and to see if we can have Forever Me at the table and Mr. Jackson, who brings so much specialized talent to the city. In the staff report, it talks about him having brought Mandela to, to the Bay Area, having planned other Juneteens for other cities. And also, he, he was recommended by me to the Forever Me Foundation when they did their Juneteenth event last year and they were, they paid him to help with their event. So it's not me trying to just find a random person, but someone who has a history of doing this event. And it was to work with both. However, without hearing from them for a considerable amount of time, we have done a majority of planning. We are just seeking out Mr. Jackson's services. Two, one, book talent, who we do have a name that I'm not going to announce tonight because we're not in contract, but it is a huge, nice name, not a, not a, nothing that's going to bring public safety concerns, but amazing. And we do have a great emcee he's recommending if we did move forward with him. Also, we have reached out to, is it Foodie? The Foodie?
Foodie Crew.
Foodie Crew, who has an event normally that Wednesday. And the amazing thing is they can bring all their Foodie Crew trucks over to Juneteenth and to reach out to him for our services to have vendors set up for that event. So that, I'll open it up for questions to council.
Any questions of council, from council this time? That was extremely thorough.
Mayor, if I could just invite you to clarify further, if we just have the stipulation that we're not currently under contract, but if you want to share some more about who we're planned to get in contract with through Errol's services, I think that'd be fine to share.
The artist?
Yep.
You're okay with that? So I, we're not in contract, but I got to see this gentleman raise over. The reason why he initially came to mind, I used to teach at San Leandro High before I was an attorney, many, many, many moons ago. And I sat on a steering committee that brought him to the city of San Leandro to raise money. He raised multi-millions for the city of San Leandro. And his name is Lenny Williams. You may know him from Tower of Power. Phenomenal, phenomenal artist. He does a lot of community work. He is local, so he's not Brentwood local, but he's Bay Area local. I did have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Mr. Lenny Williams. It was kind of cool. I told him my dad would be boy crushing on him on. He told me to tell my stepdad hello. So Dad, if you're watching, Lenny Williams gave you a shout out. But yes, he would come with horns if we were to enter into contract and do a set that was approximately, I believe, 90 minutes. And there are just some phenomenal things that, that he would do. And anyway, that's, thank you.
Seeing that there are no further clarifying questions to staff, we'll open public comment at this time. Margaret?
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment in the chambers first, followed by Zoom. Remarks are limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And we did receive one written public comment on this item and it has been posted on the city's agenda's webpage. I don't have any speaker cards in person. I do have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Cenziana first. Cenziana, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I want to say, but I want to start by saying I am not opposed to this event. I am actually the lead for my campus at work for the Juneteenth festivities. And we've been conducting this even before it was declared a federal holiday. Also, we've been observing it and we wanted to participate, but we haven't found a friendly environment back in Antioch in 2022 downtown Brentwood and so on. So I really hope the tone will change this year. However, I do have my concerns. And I just want to start by saying that I really appreciate our council member Pearson bringing up this event on our city's list, if you will. However, in project management, and it's been over a year ago. I recognize that. But in project management, there is a saying, and it's been proven over and over again over the years that your lack of planning is not anyone's emergency. So if you bring something up, you need to follow up on it and make sure people are on top of it. I've been pestled like for years when I said our city staff is not at the level that the residents of Brentwood expect. And this is the proof. Between the three of you, Ms. Pearson and Joel and one trick Tony, you promoted the fact that, oh, we need to trust staff. Think that over again. Apparently, there was no will, no action, nothing that proved that they were on top of this event. However, since you trust them, why do we need to involve consultants now that are not vetted by the city and increase our cost for this particular event? Every reputable institution, private or public, has a list of vetted vendors that they collaborate with. And they have very clear agreements on cost, involvement and what have you. I've done contracts all my life. I know exactly what that entails. And I really expected the city to be on top of at least this far. I'm very disappointed again. The staff failed us and you three failed us too because you trusted them. On top of it, now you're ready to approve $45,000 for this event when you voted against $15,000 for a project that was $200,000 under budget, something that will benefit Brentwood residents in perpetuity and their families. And you rejected that. So think again when you play with taxpayers' money. It's your responsibility and I really hope you take it very seriously. So far, the three of you did not prove that. Anyway, we're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion by, promoted by the proponent and lead of this event. Diversity, let's check the box. I agree on that. Equity, how is it equitable? When the Wally didn't get funding, the most recent Lunar New Year, Diaz de los Muertos, nobody got this type of funding from the city ever. Consultants, again, they, no. And then inclusion is yet to see. Who's going to participate? Is there a clear analysis on this? Nobody knows. On top of that, let's talk about the cost of security around this event.
These speakers' timer had expired. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Excuse me if I cough a little bit. I have a little thing going. I just want to say that, a little bit, just kind of tell a story. I come to California by way of Orlando. And I've always been one to take the paper. Back when, when we got paper papers, the paper boy would fly by his pterodactyl and drop it on my doorstep. Anyway, we always used to read stories in the, in the Orlando Sentinel about Juneteenth celebrations. And at the time, these were private parties. And so we would read about it and it would be black people mostly that would, would go to these parties and they would celebrate Juneteenth, which was kind of a strange construction, but it always caught my curiosity. And I came to learn that it, it celebrated what was, to the best anybody could tell, the actual end of slavery, the, the last freeing of a slave that anybody could, could document. And to me, this always was just a great thing. I mean, slavery is just an evil thing. And for us to finally rid ourselves of this national shame, it just always warmed my heart. And I always read about these parties and I didn't ever go to one. I was not invited, basically. I didn't have friends that were having a Juneteenth party. Not everybody did. And here it is, 40 years, something like 40 years later. And now finally, we have a national holiday to celebrate this event that was just one of the most momentous events in our nation's history. And now we're going to have a public celebration where all of us get to share in this tradition that's been going on for, you know, since the mid 1800s. It's, it's just an amazing thing. And to hear Councilmember Pearson speak about it so passionately and with so much enthusiasm and everything that she described, seriously, I'm just excited to have the opportunity to go to this and experience it for myself. So I want to thank the city for putting this on. And I will see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clarissa. Clarissa, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. To introduce myself again, my name is Clarissa Wilson. I am the CEO of Forever Me Foundation and our passion is to encourage and support youth involvement in the community by spearheading events such as the Let Freedom Ring Juneteenth Celebration that has been in fruition since about 2020. We are a young adult-led board, all former students of this county, with most of y'all know my mom as a director who was here at the last meeting. I'm 23 years old and I was one of the first people to bring forth an event commemorating Juneteenth within the city of Antioch, as well as the first person to garner support, city support for a Juneteenth event here in the city of Brentwood back in 2022. I'm not here necessarily to re-explain my credibility in regards to planning events, but more so here to speak my piece and express my sincere disappointment with the way things have gone these past few weeks since the last meeting. I wanted to share my perspective as I'm not exactly sure where the disconnect began, but what I will say is that I wish that for future reference, that you all take a look at your process in regards to planning events and working with third-party vendors. As someone who came into the meeting, into the last meeting, given the impression that I was simply just waiting for the, the city to decide the financial support, not sponsorship, but support that they were going to give for the planning of the Let Freedom Ring Juneteenth Celebration, I instead was blindsided by a completely different argument that had nothing to do with me or my organization. Because of the level of complaining that happened in the two-plus-hour conversation, Councilwoman Pearson was able to make a motion which allowed her to be appointed as liaison in charge of the planning for the new citywide, city-run Juneteenth Celebration with the options of determining whether to partner with Forever Me Foundation or bring us on as a consultant. After that decision was made, I want the rest of council to know that things went completely downhill. I spoke to Councilwoman Pearson personally twice after that last meeting and both conversations ended roughly in the same manner with me essentially telling her that I needed to bring the information that she told me back to my board. But it was always my impression that at the last council meeting, Forever Me Foundation was willing to collaborate in some way with the city since we had already been putting in the work. But it was through the direction of the many people a part of that discussion that night with her as the lead that the city needed to develop more information in regards to what our actual options were outside of that motion. That never happened. I received an email from Tim Ogden on February 22 and the email just restated the motion and no further information was, was given besides the fact that our original application had been terminated as the new plan was for the city to run the event with the options of either consulting or partnering with Forever Me Foundation. I'm not going to get into too much of the condescending conversations I'm not going to get into too much of the condescending conversations that I had with Councilwoman Pearson that made me wait two weeks prior to even speaking out again, but what I will say is that I find it very disappointing that not even so much as a text message or email was given to me to serve as notice that she had made the decision to no longer work with For- Forever Me Foundation and instead gave money to Mr. Jackson. Whom we sought out for assistance with our, per her words, epic failure of an event last year to work with the city. I stand here to defend something that I've worked so hard on and once again have been let down by the same type of people that are meant to be lifting me up as a young adult leader at this community. Thank you Mayor Bryant, Councilwoman Myers Mendoza for being the ones who originally supported this event that we successfully and under unfortunate circumstances brought to your city for the first time ever, two years ago. As well as your continued support of this organization. Councilwoman Pearson and those under her authority, I truly hope that your event this year goes the way you deserve it to go. But also that it is as educational as you're presenting and serves its purpose, given the short amount of time you have to put it together. We do this work to make changes that impact our generation and not to make headlines for political benefit or money. As for Forever Me Foundation and to the Brentwood community, I hope that we can still count on your individual support. As we will not let this setback change the trajectory of our impact for youth in Contra Costa County. Thank you. God bless and good luck.
Thank you. The next speaker is Velma. Velma, go ahead.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and city staff. You know, I was not going to speak on this item. Um I was just going to let my daughter speak so that she get very pointedly. But I do want to clarify something. The evening that I spoke with um uh Pat Tinesha was, the call was basically to talk to me about a post she saw on Facebook that she felt that I was an attack. And I clarified to her that it was a reshare. There was no attack. She also wanted to inquire about me inquiring on some conversations that I had um with clarity on the motion. And the reason why I asked that is because we still, to this day, have not been clear on what partnership and consulting is. Her words to me in a very stern way, it was partnership and consultant was one and the same. Well, I know the difference because that's if you look at the dictionary and the word of a partnership and a consultant, they have two different meanings. And it was stated that was it to be that Forever Me was going to help fund it. We agreed to because we were already doing the fundraising for it. You all have gone on and um allowed her to go ahead and with the planning, we were never invited to any of those meetings around the table. She told me herself that she wanted my daughter and her foundation to be a part because she wanted to have youth and young adult vo- voice. That has not happened. But with that, I know that with a lot of effort and with that time that you all are going to take under whatever she's planning with Errol, and I have no discredit to what Errol can do. Just as much as I don't have and don't respect anyone to discredit what I can do, neither my family. We have served faithfully this community, faithfully this community and really done some amazing things. My daughter still will be planning her thirteenth annual school supply giveaway that has served all of Contra Costa County. Serving thousands of students and families that she spearheads with her foundation of full young adults, college students. That's what we want. What are we doing when we're taking and we're not trying to find ways to help groom and educate and give our young adults pathways to continue to serve faithfully in the community? When we're taking things away from them and then silencing their voices. Yes, you're silencing their voice and you gave no regard to how my daughter felt or feel after putting in all this work. But it's okay because I know we also serve a God who will continually to grow and to develop. So I do wish you all the best. I wish you a successful Juneteenth. Because this is the same exact scenario that happened to her. But she will not be defeated. She doesn't, she's not going to, I'm not going to make sure, I'm going to make sure I do everything to continue to support my my daughter and her young people that are sit on her board. But again, I do want to wish you all the best. And I hope that you all understand the harm that has been caused. And that's some extor- extortive, but she is due an apology. Because we we came into a meeting totally misguided, with totally misguided. So, Ten, thank you. That's thank you to you and to Amanda. Thank you. To you, Mayor Bryant, and to you, Tim Ogden, you all came to me in good faith and speak and speaking to me. My feelings and sentiment are still the same. We can and until we unify a message of supporting our young people, we're gonna lose them. They're not gonna want to come back into our community to serve. But guess what? We're still standing. That's on behalf of the Wilson family. God bless you and have a successful Juneteenth.
I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment and move into council discussion.
Um before we go on to council discussion, I want to clarify some stuff with city. Nobody's been paid for Juneteenth, correct? Anybody want to talk about that? Has has have we paid Mr. Jackson? That was something that was misrepresented in public comment.
There have been meetings and discussions with Mr. Jackson, but no funding has been committed until we got to this meeting to then get the budget clarified and the plan of action for the event. So no money has been transacted.
Thank you. And then uh another thing that I want to say is that a meeting does not have to be had in person. So I did have several meetings with Forever Me Foundation. And besides just speaking about the other comments that Ms uh Wilson, Velma Wilson spoke of, we did speak in detail about what partnership was and to clarify what I said and if Tim Ogden, if you can clarify for me. I had never stated that a partnership, because I'm an attorney and I understand the difference. A partnership and a consulting uh was the same. What I stated that I was told by city staff is that sometimes, and I want to go back to something. Our our approval that was presented to Forever Me Foundation said we would look into a partnership. Consulting or other forms of compensation was what was had that night. So I discussed the difference between a partnership and then I discussed consulting versus sponsorship. Tim Og- Mr. Ogden, can you explain what a sponsorship is versus consulting? Because those were the two that I said is very similar. Not a partnership and a consulting.
I can answer your question through what the council motion was, and the council motion was to consider a partnership because as it was portrayed to the city council, significant preparations had already been undertaken and plans were already underway. And a partnership would allow the city to leverage what has already been put together. Motion then was or a consulting fee where they could help suggest and advise and help help the city plan the event or some other form of compensation if a consulting fee wasn't appropriate. Our terminology for sponsorship is in one of your use of funds policies about what sponsorship is, and that was what the original request was on the agenda. Was anything above five thousand dollars that the city wanted to give a sponsorship in that in that venue. Uh so I don't know if that helps, but that's my understanding of what happened.
Thank you. And then I just want to further add a couple of other little items. Consistently in my dialogue with Forever Me Foundation, every single time I spoke, the point of contention was that Ms Clarissa Wilson wanted decision-making authority. She wanted to be the final, even up into her last email to Tim Ogden, she wanted to decide. One of my uh consistent conversation was that council had directed me on the final decision-making, but we would all sit at the table and collectively. She also informed me that I was trying, we were trying to base, she felt as if we were trying to pay her for her resources. In my conversation on February eighteenth, I suggested that all of the resources that she had already collected, she keep them for her future planning. And that she just, to me, it was more important that she have a seat at the table to find out what she can bring creatively to the table. So this was not an issue of me trying to circumvent what I said on the night that I brought up Juneteenth. Prior to the Forever Me Foundation even putting an application, I requested a future agenda item request for the city to sponsor Juneteenth. I came before they even put an application in. This was not about me trying to conflict with them. Several cities, Antioch, Oakley, Berkeley, San Francisco. Oakland does their own city sponsored Juneteenth event, especially since it became one of the only eleven recognize federal recognized holidays. Most cities are now doing their own uh Juneteenth event. And that's why when I initially came before this council, I thought it was imperative important for us to do that as a city as well. And this was before any application was filed. An application was filed thereafter. And I've brought this to the attention and and said some of the things that people said during public comment. I said that I thought it was a problematic and in Parks and Rec apologized for this, that it was brought on the same night. My app, my request, my future agenda item request should not have been brought on the same night that the applicant. Yes, I agree, the applicant should have been told that there was already council seeking further direction on how the city can throw its own event. And I've since been told by city staff, they apologize for bringing these on the same night. That being said, my goal is to move forward with making sure, and I don't want any of this issue to overlook and be an overshadow or cloud over everything that I described before we went to public comment. Um I I I'm just disturbed. I my exact words was I was concerned that it was going to be an issue of pitting black women against black women. And so I'm really saddened by what just occurred and what has been occurring. And and it's just disgusting to me that I'm being made out to be a martyr of someone who wants to take away from the Forever Me Foundation. That is not what's happening. I want in perpetuities for this city to throw an event that brings all of its residents together. As I said that night, there is no guarantee that if we went with a third party, no matter who that was, to throw Juneteenth this year, that we would have one next year and the year after that. That's why it's always been important to me that this becomes something that the city takes as serious as all of the other holidays and other events that we're in. That being said, I'm I'm done with my discussion portion.
I I don't even know what to. We were all here. We all saw what happened. I think part of the problem, and this is not to say anything mean, but I think part of the problem that happened, and I I don't think that I I maybe Velma and Clarissa remember, but you asked for this a year before it came forward. And I think the ball was dropped and that's one of the reasons we're in the pickle that we're in. I think if that hadn't happened, I don't think that any of us would be in the situation. And I don't think we all want this to be a great event. It's a big part of American history. They happen to be black, but it is American history. And um so I don't even know what's going on, but it's just, we did, it was not against Clarissa or Velma. I think we were all that night saying we'd like some kind of partnership, some kind of something. We didn't know what that looked like. And um we did give you full ring, right? It's like, I mean, who better to do it than you? So I I think we are all confident in your abilities to be able to manage this. Um I think it's our first time. Let's get it done. Let's see how it goes. Let's have a post more, you know, post-event meeting. We can, what went well, what didn't go well, what can we do better? But in this case, it's it's a very short window and we need to have some grace for the people who are doing it because it is a lot, and Park and Rec knows this, it is a lot to do an event like this this quickly. So I understand that emotions are high, but please find it in your heart to have some grace.
That's fair.
Thank you. I think it's 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 very clear to me this event needs to happen and I think Brentwood has shown its desire for expansion of cultural um education and activities. Because every time there's another culture or religion or background bringing us something forward that we haven't seen before, it's very well attended. People are excited about it. People ask for more. I mean, I can bring up the the Chinese New Year event that just happened, the Lunar New Year and Diwali and Muk Tangan and and a lot of these other events that are happening in Dia de los Muertos, they're incredibly well attended. We're a melting pot and and we are our best because of that, because we come together with a lot of different histories and backgrounds. And and there's been, I I've been discouraged by some of the things I'm seeing online. Um by people who appear to be deliberately misleading and misrepresenting um what this event means and who it means it to. Because as you've both said, it means it to all of us. This is something that impacts all of us. And the way you've described it was very different from what I originally thought. Um and the freedom, the Freedom Walk sounds especially exciting to me. But I also want to say, like, I I went to the Juneteenth event in Antioch a few years ago and to the one that Clarissa and Velma did in Brentwood, and those were well attended too. Those were well organized. They were great. They were very good community togetherness meetings. So it is hard to see like what you're talking about, this feeling of needing to be against each other and pitted against each other because I think there's room, right? Um we know Antioch is doing an event, Oakley is doing an event. My concern at the last meeting was that, um and this is again, not fully understanding what was going on. Um was that we were going to give them a small amount of money and say, give us all of your resources and all of your planning and a little pat on the head and say you're done. And and that clearly we're finding out there was more to this conversation and yes, it was a mistake that the ball was dropped and things faltered, if you will, for an entire year. And there were some conversations that took place and and it the clarity wasn't made. And so yeah, there were some mistakes. I do think this event has incredible potential to bring people together. And if we're not seeing it as a way, and this is another online promotion that just is very saddening as a way to take away one of our concerts, that's not the intent of this. The intent of this is to bring us all together in celebration and better understanding and music is involved. And obviously, if, I mean, whether or not we get Tower of Power, hello, how cool is that? We're going to have music. Lenny Williams, sorry, yes, 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 representing or formerly of. Um but this is a chance for us all to learn from each other and I I'm seeing everything online and some of these other, some of these Facebook pages that it's disgusting and
Can I say something about, that's exactly why we need this event? Because of the stuff that we see on certain people's Facebook pages is exactly why this education has to happen.
But I think it, part of the problem for me, and and yeah, I, people are seeing it as an either or. It's not an either or. It's it's actually, it's a pretty cool opportunity for us to to learn about this history, the parts that we don't know, and and I'm learning every time we talk about this, I'm learning more. There's a lot I didn't know about this. And I thought I had a general understanding, a lot I didn't know. So I'm excited about that. But to bring together the businesses and the nonprofits and the communities and the schools, I imagine, and all of these things into a day of celebration and learning. Look at, look at what happens when we do cultural events. I mean, I I keep bringing that up because that is what people want. I mean, we see people posting about it, like Brentwood needs more culture, Brentwood needs more culture. This is what it is. We're bringing culture together with celebration and making this a learning opportunity. Um I I'm gonna just talk about the elephant in the room. The money is a lot. Um I I do, I see that so much of this to me feels like because we're up against a wall, we don't have time to do anything where staff could take over this part of it and there wouldn't need to be a consultant on that part of it because staff could, whatever. We don't have time for that. Um a lot of this budget appears to be things that are making it solid, making it into a day that everyone's gonna want to take part in. I mean, it's, it is a lot of money. I don't know if next year it would be the same exact amount of money based on the timing of it and all the rest of it. I don't know what that looks like. I think uh Councilmember Mendoza mentioned and uh or somebody mentioned after the event, kind of having a get together and debrief and figure out what we can do differently. But there is a lot happening. I originally looked at this list of all the different activities and I went, wow. Um and I was thinking about Oktoberfest and the first year was a little bit smaller and it kept building. But that doesn't mean that can happen here too, just because it's starting strong. So the fact that we've got a consultant is allowing us to start it strong. Um it's a hard thing. I mean, I think we should talk a little bit about the budget and what it looks like and what all the different components feed into, but we need this event. And we need to be okay with it together and we need to like examine the way that people are talking about it and examine the way that people are expressing themselves about it and see that as a sign that we need this event. Thanks.
Councilman Horlemans. I agree a hundred percent with the fact that a lot of work was put in to get us to where we're at right now. It is a lot of money and that that has to be a conversation. That's a majority of what I'm hearing from citizens. That seems like a lot of money, but I want to answer just a couple other questions that came in in one of the emails that was sent in. I was the one that brought up canceling the concert in the park the Friday afterwards. Because, one, we could take that money and use it for Juneteenth, but two, we have staff. Everybody in this room, our police departments, our public works people that are going to be at Juneteenth. And they're going to be working on a federal holiday. And then we're going to ask them to come back and work more overtime on the Friday following. So our job is to be concerned for the people that work for the city of Brentwood. I understand, in the email, it talks about an event for all of Brentwood. This event is for all of Brentwood. I don't care what the color of your skin is, I don't care what any of the other things that you think are a border, or a way to keep you out of this event, show up. I've showed up to so many events in the downtown that I had never attended before I became on, or before I got on city council, and I have learned so much. Sometimes you step out and you grow, and you learn just a little bit more about someone than you knew before, and that's not a horrible thing. Maybe we should try doing that. The one other part I want to just, I have, after sitting through Agenda Review with you and watching you trying to put all this event together, I wrote this out just because I didn't want to mess it up. I want to thank Councilmember Pearson for taking on such a huge responsibility. I did not realize what a large task we were asking her to take on when we did. That being said, I think that future, in the future, we should appoint no less than two council members for any, anything, any committees, any planning of events, so that we are there to help you. You've sat here and done the whole thing by yourself. I did not take away from the staff, but I mean, out of the five of us that should have been there to help you, you did it without our help and our support. And that shouldn't happen again in the future. It should always be two of us together, working on a project. And that way, when feelings are hurt, there's other people that were in the room that can recount how the events went. So again, thank you very much for all the hard work you've done. I do think we still need to talk about the budget just slightly, but that was it.
Councilwoman Pearson.
And I'm happy to talk further about the budget. I want to say thank you, but I just, again, I know you're not taking anything away, it was never me alone, and phenomenal, just amazing work of staff. I never felt unsupported, but I appreciate that sentiment. I think when we talk about Juneteenth and we talk about a celebration of freedom, it goes beyond the freedom of slaves, it also is religious freedom, freedom of speech, that's so important in this city. Thank you, Mr. Flor, for your comments. They didn't fall on deaf ears, I appreciate that. That being said, is there a way to share the part of the agenda that talks about funding for this project? Because we already approved 30, the ask is for, I think, 14,200, look, our money person over here was like $250 more, so we're looking for $14,250, $250 more, 250,000. And I do know that this is a ask, this is last minute. One of the things to Vice Mayor Mendoza's questioning, next year, I think with Vice Mayor, oh, a seven dollars, ooh, Myers, wrong M, to Vice Mayor Myers questioning, thank you. This is being done fast, and we're trying to get this done, and I appreciate just the quickness on turnaround on how we can find a band and a master ceremonies. The bulk of the amount is then the band and the AV, and I'm grateful that the company that was going to work on the sound, AV staging, and the other company for the porta-potties was able to still give us some very good rates for a turnaround of two days before. The good news was that we did have a concert planned, and we already had an estimate of cost, and they were able to turn this around. But we are doubling the time, so time would be from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, which the concert would have been two hours, we're adding on two additional hours. The other cost that we have here is city staffing. This is an estimate, it may come in lower than possibly, because we're basing this on numbers we've never had before. So, you know, this number is speculative of possibly being lower. And we did shoot some of our costs a little bit higher, for example, on the marketing portion. We do have a lot of outlets and resources of volunteers, of promoting this. I've been reached out by Greg at the Brentwood Press, with Mike at Contra Costa County News. I've been reached too by all of our nonprofits. DBC said that they would do some marketing promotion, as well as, if the contract was done, I don't think it would, Mr. Williams even said at his upcoming concert, he would possibly make a public statement about Brentwood. And there have been invitations that our own mayor come to a couple of local concerts to promote it, he's been invited to speak on that. That being said, I think that there are some costs that we may be able to shave down a bit, but I think the ask is to have an amount not to exceed with us understanding as a team of people who've been working together, that we need to be resourceful and be a little frugal with our spending. So we are seeking out as much help that we can from all of our community partners to help us with this. And I do know that this is a reach, and I won't even want to talk about 2025's budget, but my hope is that we do come in slightly under this amount. And Lud has made some discussions that we will be talking about a little bit more, as well as this will come up on a future agenda item when we start to talk about budget items.
Can I ask a little question? And I mean, it's not a lot of money, but the $1,500, the master ceremonies, can someone on staff do that as part of their job, to come in?
Part of our master of ceremonies was to drum up excitement, and I know Parks and Rec staff can talk a little bit more about this, is someone who has familiarity with dealing with an artist and being able to move some of the community acts around. So, and I'm sure somebody on staff could possibly do it, but we have a lot of transitions in staging between if we did have a bunch of community acts and then this big, this artist. So it would take someone who has the knowabouts to be able to do it, and that amount is actually reduced. She's pointing, I mean, nothing.
Thanks.
Question about the band. If we can get him, I mean, obviously, that's pretty exciting, but if we are not able, can we look at a more local band that's maybe a little bit more affordable?
We did look at some local bands, one of the things is the draw to come to Juneteenth, and I did see a list of some bands. I mean, it's something we can, and actually, he did discount us, right?
I will say, thank you for moving it to 4:00 to 8:00. I was a little concerned about the 1:00 o'clock and the heat in June, so thank you for doing that.
That was actually under the advisement of our Parks and Rec staff, who knows way better what time the sun is focusing on the stage and on the people in the audience than me thinking about, oh, I want to get my kids in bed before school, so. And then I'm like, there's no school, they kept saying, there's no school, dummy. So I was like, oh, well, cool, we stay out all night.
So there was mention about the city staffing potentially being a little bit of a high estimate. Where might there be a little bit wiggle room there?
So we've got the street closure by the Public Works Department, that's probably a fixed cost. The Parks and Recreation Staff, we would have that staffed based on an estimated number of people there and different stations that they'd be handling. It's the police side that if we have a significant decrease in attendance that we've planned for on a Wednesday night in the middle of the week, that we would send some officers home if we didn't think that there was a pressing need for safety to have them there on site. So that could decrease the cost from there. So there are probably some fixed costs, but some flexibility we have on the back end. Now, if we have the contrary, and we have, instead of 5,000 people show up, we have 15,000, we may have to call in some extra staff, and that cost would go up. And of course, we would just have to take care of business on the day of, and we'd rectify it later with you later.
Are we gonna, I know you're gonna have, and we talked about this last time, are we gonna recoup any funds with the food truck rentals and the craft rentals?
So at this portion of time, we're so last minute, that instead of us trying to do a RFP to try to do food truck and vendors, and sticking to the nature of making sure that it fits the Juneteenth goal, the good news is Foodie Crew. I always forget, I was going to say Foodie Trucks, because I love going over there on Wednesdays. The Foodie Crew, it wouldn't cause a distraction, because they already have their special use over there at Veterans Park, and they are willing, according to city reaching out to them, to move the Foodie Crew here, which would make it so much easier, because they maintain the permits and the insurance. So Foodie Crew will move over here, so it's a swift transition, and it also involves someone that we currently have contracts with, and they have been vetted, fully vetted. As far as the craft vendors, for our craft vendors, my suggestion was, and we can revisit this, to recoup some costs that we don't charge the vendors, for tables, but we can as a way to try to recoup the cost, if it's the direction of the council. I would entertain the idea of us charging, but again, that would be something in the contract that we would be soliciting Mr. Jackson to maintain and to get the vendors, so that we don't have to put it out for a request. It does delay the time and the return, and we do have a short period of time.
So maybe that's something, and this is kind of the post thing, like, next year, we can talk about it, because I know a lot of people are concerned about the expense, like, where can we recoup some money next year when we're not under the gun to get it done? But so, I mean, I hope people realize, we're trying to figure out how to do it, it might not happen this year, but it is something that is on our minds, it's not something that we're just like, you know.
And what about sponsorships? Like, obviously, this year's too late, but potentially next year?
Yes, and also sponsorships and grants. So that has been a conversation that I've also had with Parks and Rec, that next year, these are things that we can look into, starting, I mean, this year, actually, for next year. So sponsorships and grants, I hope I'm not misrepresenting, Tian. Okay, thank you.
So, did we fully answer whether we could have the vendors maybe paying to come in? Because you said it may be possible, but we never gave him a chance to answer whether we could do that or not.
Thank you. So I'll do my best to answer this question, it kind of depends, counsel. So you're looking at potentially charging vendors, specifically on the craft vendors right now. If you're talking about a couple hundred dollars, $50 worth of that may be, with a set number of vendors, you're looking about maybe a dozen or 15, you're not going to be recouping a ton of money. However, you're actually adding a cost to them to do business, on top of all the other things that we would be requiring them, insurance, business license, and all those type of things. So it depends in that sense. If you have someone, like, we're talking about doing consultation or helping us with those vendor components, I mean, it allows us to fall under the umbrella license piece, that kind of maybe helps with that. But again, you're not recovering a ton of money to offset your cost, but you also are creating some more hurdles that's going to impact the type of vendors you're going to get onsite. So there is possibility to do those things, and I think having a not-to-exceed budget gives us some flexibility to evaluate that a little bit more. But I don't want to mislead counsel in thinking we're getting thousands of dollars in fees from these vendors, that's just usually not the case.
Thank you.
I think it's something definitely to consider, but when you think about maybe like 20 people, even if we went to $100, it's not a lot, but it's something we can consider for next year. For this year, I think it just would be kind of hard, because we, again, time is of the essence, but I appreciate that we're trying to think creatively and outside of the box to figure out other ways to creatively fund this.
Well, I do want to say thank you for the work that you've done, and for staff's outstanding work as well. This is a very difficult situation to get accomplished, but this is, like has been said, this is a community event that uplifts every single person that lives here. And so it's an opportunity to learn, to experience, and I think with the Freedom Walk, it accomplishes something that I was hoping to see more of our events do, and that is get the people that are coming to the event into the businesses downtown, instead of just standing out on the sidewalks, give them an opportunity to see how awesome our businesses are, and show their appreciation by spending their money in our local businesses, which is also an American tradition that I'm very interested in seeing. Seeing that all of this has been discussed right now, do I have a motion? Are we ready for a motion yet further?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, sorry, let me make sure I'm on task. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving a 2024 Juneteenth city event with a not-to-exceed amount of $45,000.
And I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving into item H3, this next item is related to the priority projects for the Economic Development Grant Program for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026. And Abraham Salinas, our senior analyst.
Does anyone in the council want to take a three, four-minute break?
Yes, please.
Stand and stretch?
Okay, we will take a three or four-minute break.
Okay, we'll be starting shortly. All right, we're gonna start the meeting.
Okay, at this time, we are going to reconvene from our recess. We will move now into item H three. Uh, which is the priority projects for the economic, I'm sorry, is that the right one? It is. Economic Development Program and Abraham Salinas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, members of the city council. Uh, my name is Abraham Salinas. I'm a senior analyst with the, uh, Economic Development Division of the City Manager's Office. So tonight I'll be discussing two separate items related to the Economic Development Grant Program. The first will be the priority projects for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Economic Development Grant Program. And the second will be the proposed updates to the Competitive Grant Program Guidelines and Application. So a little bit of background and history on the business license tax. Prior to two thousand and two, the city allocated twenty percent of business tax revenue to the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. Revenue collected at the time totaled about twelve thousand dollars. The Economic Development Grant Program was then established and the revenues were to be reserved for the explicit purpose. Of economic development, business promotion and institutional advertisement for the city of Brentwood. Organizations including nonprofits, private businesses. The city of Brentwood and Brentwood Chamber of Commerce may, may apply annually for the use of these funds. On a project by project basis, but to be approved by the city manager and eventually the city council. In two thousand and thirteen, two categories of funding were established, with the first category being priority projects, programs or events. That are approved every two years and the second category being competitive economic development grants, which are approved on an annual basis. Since two thousand and four, the Economic Development Grant Program has awarded over two point eight million dollars in grant funding. Before you this evening is the proposed funding for fiscal years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. For the Economic Development Priority Projects category as recommended by the Land Use and Development Committee. The proposed funding for the priority projects amounts to a total of a hundred thousand dollars. A hundred and, sorry, a hundred thousand dollars, four hundred per year for fiscal years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. For reference, the approved funding for the past two years has been provided. Uh, earlier, uh, as an earlier item, uh, Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day or Freedom Day. Commemorates the emancipation of freedom of enslaved African Americans in the United States. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city council directed staff to host an inaugural Juneteenth Event beginning June twenty twenty-four. In anticipation of this annual event, the lead committee recommended allocating twenty thousand dollars. From the Economic Development Grant Program Priority Projects category towards the future Juneteenth Event. The remaining costs for the Juneteenth Event would be requested. To be funded by the general fund and included in the draft twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget to be presented for city council for consideration. If LUD's proposed funding for the priority projects category are approved, there would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Remaining for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Competitive Grants Category. The recommendation before you tonight is to approve the proposed allocation of funds for the Economic Development. Grant Program Priority Projects Category and fund the sources for each project in the total amount of a hundred thousand, four hundred dollars. Annually for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. As recommended by the Land Use and Development Committee and authorized the city manager, it does indeed execute all grant documents. That concludes this portion of my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff?
I just want to clarify that for, um, the DBC MOU. We recommended it come out of the Economic Development Budget somehow. And/or the general fund. So that's why you're not seeing the dollars in here. So. How soon do we think that's going, going to come to us for approval?
So we're currently developing the MOU with the DBC and internal staff, and we plan to bring that, the second meeting in April.
Is that gonna give them enough time so that they don't lose the, the person in place?
I believe so. Their current MOU goes through June of twenty twenty-four. So if it's approved at the second meeting in April, that gives the month before.
Okay.
The current MOU, yeah.
And I think for us to have a fruitful discussion, I'd like to ask a clarifying question of when we will be coming back to talk about. Our budget and where we can talk further about the, um, other items, um, such as the Juneteenth.
So the schedule is to have a budget workshop in May. Where we will be proposing a draft budget. And then taking any council feedback on any of the items which would include, uh, the Juneteenth item. And then we would come back before you the end of June for final adoption after incorporating any council direction into that draft budget.
Thank you.
There any further clarifying questions of staff at this time? Counselor member? Okay. This time then we'll open public comments, Margaret.
At this time, the present public in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak into public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment. In the chambers followed by Zoom. Remarks are limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired and we receive no written public comments on this item. And I have no speaker cards and I see no hands raised.
This time we'll close public comments, move into council discussion. If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion?
I, I do just one item I'd like to bring up and just off of the budget, the, the graph that we were looking at. Where it talks about, um. The harvest time trail. Where you guys decided that, that ten thousand dollars for the pamphlet. Can that be moved out of there and into like agriculture? Is, is there a reason we're taking it out of here and?
So, uh, the harvest time funding, uh, comes out of impact fees. Impact fees are supposed to pay for the one-time cost. Of, of the impact of development that occurred. And, and so there's, the AB sixteen hundred law dictates how the dollars were supposed to be used. So ideally, when you allocate those funds, it should be used for not ongoing operations, but for one-time cost. That was the reason why this. Why it was brought into here. If the council wanted to pull it out of, uh, other funding to, uh, through the ag mitigation funds. You know, you definitely have this discretion to do so.
I mean, if, if there's no reason that it's sitting in the economic development, we could use that money. Towards economic development and take the ten thousand from the agricultural budget. To do, um, enterprise budget to, or did I miss that?
No, I, I think it makes sense. I think the only thing is we're gonna not have any of that money pretty soon, like, because it's all gonna go. To the Sellers Avenue, the Sellers, the Innovation Center for hair, like that thing. I can't remember the name of it.
See Ag Innovation Center?
So we're not gonna have that money anymore. So I guess you could do it one year, but do you wanna? From, I'm saying from just an accounting perspective, when you start hopping around what accounts you're using for your stuff. To me, if I were analyzing that, it would look a little funny. Like, why are you hopping around accounts? If you've always seen it as an economic development thing, which we have. Why did you put it here and then why did you bring it back a year later? I mean, I, I, it doesn't matter to me. I just think it would look a little. Funny, but I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Okay, I, I just saw the number and was asked.
Yeah, I think if it was ongoing, it would be fine, but we're not gonna have that anymore.
I do think it's a good question. Um, I have a, a comment that, um. So in, in looking at the staff report, I'm just gonna quote something. It said twenty percent of. The business license tax collected shall be set aside for economic development for the explicit purpose. Of business promotion and its institutional advertisement for the city of Brentwood. Organizations including the city of Brentwood and the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. May apply annually for the use of these funds on a project by project basis to the city manager. I understand we can't change the, the wording per se. I, I would like. In, in all of our, anything that we're communicating about this, that we don't limit it to those two names. Um, I think that sounds. Too much like it's, it's a Brentwood Chamber of Commerce grant and it isn't. Um, I just think we, we need to make sure that we're highlighting other networking or business promotion groups like, you know, the DBC, for example. So it, it just appears to be misleading to me and I just want to make sure that as we, whenever we talk about this, that we don't just say the city of Brentwood in the chamber.
Uh, we'll be talking about it in the grant guidelines in the next item and we never. Call out just specifically the city or the Chamber of Commerce, but this is what was adopted by the voters in two eighteen.
And so I know we can't change it, yeah. I know we can't change it there. Tim explained that to me, so.
Yeah, but we, we, we very clearly, last year we had more people apply than we ever had because staff. Uh, with the direction of council asked us to reach out to more and more nonprofits and throughout the years we add names onto that list so that when, when. Um, after tonight's approval, this next week we'll be pushing out the competitive grant and we send it out to every organization. And we, we don't include information related to tha- that line that you quoted at the.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my one other thing was, uh, a few years ago, there was a, a local business that applied after the, um. Final date. And I, I, I see that on page one fifty, there was a section that talks about the, the deadline. But I just want to make sure wherever, where it is appropriate to add that, that we're very careful to say that no applications will be accepted after the deadline.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll clarify that during the, the next item during the guidelines and we can talk about that. Great point. Hi, Smear.
Also, and I think we're gonna do this, I think. In the next section, maybe not here, but in the next item. I think we really need to talk about economic development for the explicit purpose of business promotion and institutional advertisement for the city of Brentwood because. I think we get excited about events that sometimes maybe don't fit that definition. Um, and we, I, I think that's the next item though, right? Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, have I done public comment on this? I already did, yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving the funding of the priority events category for the Economic Development Grant Program for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. And twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six and authorize the city manager or is designated to execute documents related to the grant program.
And I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item moves. Moving into our next agenda item, which is also relating to Economic Development Grant Program Guidelines and Grant Application. Abraham?
Thank you. I'll just dive right in. Um, a little bit of background on the guidelines. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Economic Development Grant Program Guidelines and Application. Were updated to, with the intent to streamline the grant selection process and establish more objective scoring criteria. After implementing the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Economic Development Grant Program with the revised guidelines and application. Staff identified further updates that are necessary in order to enhance the program's effectiveness. The current guidelines and application led to confusion amongst applicants and staff had to diff, had difficulty accurately assessing. The information submitted in the applications. Here are a few, a few updates, proposed updates to the grant program guidelines. Major updates include removal of the marketing requirement, marketing plan requirement as it is not part of the scoring criteria. Second, in order, uh, to be reimbursed, all grant awardees will be required to receive all necessary permits and police services. Third, if it is, uh, if it is determined that a grant awardee has not properly cleaned up after the event. The cost for cleanup, including staff time, will be deducted from the final grant reimbursement. And/or the organization may not be considered for future grant funding. A new addition is if, if a script is developed as part of a project or event. Applicants must provide the script to the city at least two weeks in advance. The contents of the script could be used by the city council for future grant determination. Next, uh, organizations must also operate without discrimination. That was already there, but we wanted to add some clarifying language. As defined by federal, state or local law. If a court of law determines and that an organization has violated any such discriminatory law. The organization may not be considered for grant reimbursement and/or grant funding and/or future grant funding. A redlined version of the guidelines, including all the proposed changes, is attached to the staff report. And the, the recommendation before you tonight is to approve the proposed update to the Economic Development Grant Program Guidelines and Application. And authorize staff to finalize the grant application, which will adhere to the city council approved guidelines. That concludes, uh, my presentation and we're available for any questions.
Any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item? Seeing done, we will open, uh, public comments.
At this time, the public present in the chambers and in Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, file a speaker card. We'll take public comment from the chambers followed by Zoom. Remarks are limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And I have no speaker cards and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
We'll close public comments, move into council discussion. Counselor member, Pearson?
So, um, I had an opportunity after LUD to go further and I'm looking at the staff report. I have a bunch of things that I'd like to bring up. One is specifically if we can go ahead and put on the screen the actual, um, from the agenda, agenda packet page number. Um, I think it's one fifty-seven, which would be the economic, economic development grant guidelines. Section E.
I actually have the word version in front of me, if that's okay?
Uh, okay, that's fine. Um, unless you want me to screen share, I don't know if I can do that, but. So on section E, there's a couple of little changes and tweaks that I'd say E three. Um, there is, and I know this may sound petty, but. There is an extra slash or a comma, something needs to be fixed there. Um, E six, I'll come back to. Um, space between E ten and E eleven sounds petty. Space between E10 and E11, sounds petty, but if this is gonna be going out soon, I wanted to make sure we update that, there should be a space between 10 and 11. More importantly, on F6, if we can go down to F6, it says, "Police, traffic, and other city divisions may review the application to ensure there are no major concern." I'd like to change the word "may" to "shall." "May" is permissive, "shall" is imperative, and I think it's such an important thing that we should add "shall" to it. The other thing I would like to add is, there is no insurance provision on here. We ask for people's, one of the requirements is to provide a license, but there is no ask for insurance, of which I think we should be requesting proof of insurance. I know we do that on our special use permits, and I think that should be added on here. I don't know, maybe. Yeah, but it definitely should be on here, because it's not on here.
Councilmember Pearson, can I ask a just clarifying question? Is that for all events, those that are held in both private property and public property?
Everything, I think we should ask for insurance. My main concern was, if, even if we are going to get some form of a whole harmless or indemnification, I would want to make sure that the person is fully covered and insured to be able to pay legal fees and costs of the city. So I think for any event, we should be asking for insurance, proof of insurance. The other thing that was a big point of contention for me when I read the staff report, is at LUD, we did recommend that we add some type of discretionary language to be able to not allow a person to apply if they did violate some of the Title VII concerns, some of the federal, state law, federal and state laws, as it pertains to discrimination. The added, and I'll let our city attorney weigh in, because I did discuss this during our agenda review, the added language was that a court of law determined that an organization violated discriminatory law. That one was a point of red flag for me, because I'm wondering who's bringing the act to the court of law? And I just think it puts a hoop that what, what, what's the cause of action that someone will be bringing? And we were, we will have to wait. If someone did do something discriminatory, for example, someone had an event, let's say in our public parks, we are funding in our grant program this event, and they say, "No green people can come," and I'm just gonna choose the color of person that hopefully nobody is green, but no green person can come to the park. Straight-up discrimination based on race, ethnicity, color. And they do not allow green people to come, and we know that's discriminatory. We now have to wait for the green people, or are we waiting for the city to bring this to the court of law, before, in the following year, we say, when they apply again, to deny them? I think it puts us in more of a place of liability by not acting, and I think we need to be more upfront with saying, "We absolutely reserve the right to refuse an application without it going to court." So that was a huge point of contention for me, that we did not say at LUD that we recommended, but that was added in here. And then the last little bit of stuff that I wanted to add in here, I think that was it. That was me, that was what I had to say.
Yeah, I know that, I think the script is important. They can say whatever they want to say, and then it's up to us to decide if we felt like something was discriminatory. I feel like one of the scripts I know about was discriminatory, and I think that the people who decide that is the council. We are representative of the people, and we should have the final say on that. And I also agree on Councilwoman Pearson's comment about in court, if, in court, we were constantly told that we are like the judges, like, we decide, so we decide. That's, that's within our purview. We can give and deny grants, we only have a limited amount of money, so it's not like we don't do that all the time anyway, and the people, or the organizations we give our grants to should be reflective of our values and our morals. And so I think that that is super important, and we should take out if a court of law determines that an organization, because, like she said, if I say, "What you said was offensive to X people," then unless they take me to court, I can't hold them accountable to it, that seems not right at all. So we are the council, we should be the ones deciding if it's appropriate or not.
Well, I don't feel like we are a court of law. We set how Brentwood does business and how we handle our business. I, personally, I'm not comfortable considering the Brentwood City Council as a court of law that would make a determination of discrimination, or in the scripts that were discussed, I'm not comfortable telling somebody what they're allowed to say and not say, and what they can and cannot say. To ask me to enforce the First Amendment as a city council member, they have a right to say what they think. I think somebody once said, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." I don't know how the Brentwood City Council can begin to enforce that type of a law or that rule on somebody, because the five of us decide we don't like what they said? I don't know.
And I'm not saying, I would never impede on anyone, please, if you're racist, just say it in front of me, because then I know, and that's, I'm good to go. I would never tell anyone not to say what they want to say. It is after they say what they want to say, then we have to decide if that's the kind of language that our city supports, because we're giving them money. So, and we decide on things all the time. We decide on zoning changes, we decide on a lot of things, which is very.
I'm not saying I can't make a decision. I'm saying there is courts that are in place that will take care of the First Amendment, that enforce Fourth Amendment violations, First Amendment violations, and I don't think that's the place of the Brentwood City Council.
So you want us spending city money to take them to court every single time, if we hear that? Because that's what you're saying, then? So instead of us deciding, and let's spend the money, let's take them to court and go from there?
I think it's gonna, I think it's, you're very, it's very hard-pressed for us to censure other people's speech by attaching money to it.
I don't think I'm censuring anyone's speech, they can say whatever they want to say.
Not on your stage.
No, yes, they can. And then next year, we will sit in LUD, whoever's in LUD, and decide what they're gonna do.
Let me ask staff that recommended this wording, what was the thinking behind this particular wording regarding this item?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. So there's, there's two different items here. There's one related to the scripts, and there's one related to breaking federal, state laws relates to discrimination. I think the intent of staff, and we did send out an email to the two council members in LUD, and to bring this to their attention, since the discussion was not directly as what was included in the staff report. So first, as relates to the script, I think it's pretty clear, which is, city council wasn't saying that you wanted to restrict a person's ability and their First Amendment right, you just wanted to use the script so that in the future, you can make a determination based upon some information. And really, I guess it'd be based upon two things, because what, a script and what actually occurs are two different things. And some organizations, I don't believe are gonna provide us a script, but for all intents and purposes, there kind of was a script, but it'll be based upon personal experiences. The second one is related to discrimination. I was trying to find language to take it out of staff's hand, and so I was the one who drafted the language to say a court of law. We can definitely come up with better language to, which was the intent of the LUD members. And so that's what the discussion here tonight is. I think the script one is, I hope, it sounds like, you know, maybe the council, or at least the two LUD members, are okay with the script language, but there wants to be some change as relates to discriminatory actions by, by, by a group that's receiving funding.
Yes, Katie.
So, listening to the council's discussion, and having been asked by Councilmember Pearson prior to tonight to continue to consider this language, I do have some suggested language for your consideration that I'm happy to put up, if we want to take down Abraham's screen for a second and maybe replace it with mine. I know that always just takes a second.
And while the screen is coming up, just to give you something to consider, if you defer to a court of law, you are completely justified, and you shift the liability. If you take on the onus of making those determinations and have to find the right fact finding to defend the decision you're making to not give funds based on a discrimination claim, you're owning that, and that could bring some liability to the city, so just wanted to point that out. There's some risk in that.
And to add on to there, by not doing anything, you are also opening the door to liability. When we had our meeting, I talked about me as an attorney, if someone, if someone came and the city had paid money to put some money towards a grant, and someone did do something discriminatory, I, as an attorney, will file an unreclaim against that business and against the city to bring you in, and you all would have to go through the process of spending money, we would have to go through the process of spending money to pull ourselves out of that. So my concern is that either way, but in the reality of the, of the legal world, I do not see that even if there was someone, one, we're counting on the fact of, again, I asked the question, who's bringing said lawsuit of the violations? Is that us, or is that the person who's offended? The second thing that I'm, I'm wondering is, if they're, the members of a disenfranchised group, are they gonna have the funding available to, or to get fee waivers or to file this lawsuit? And we're sitting by arbitrarily waiting for them to do it, so I appreciate, I'm hoping that, Katie, you've come up with a resolution. I do wanna make it clear for the record, I am not saying at any time that we shouldn't impinge on anyone's freedom of speech, nor that we sit here as an authority body to make, to be a court of law. I think that goes a little bit further, but what I, what I am saying is that, one, for the scripts, I think the ask was by Councilmember Mendoza, was let us see it, not let us decide if they can say anything or not, but just so we can have it with it, so we have an idea of what's being said, but never to tell anyone, "You can't say that," or "You can't say it." That's where I took away from LUD. The second ask in here, my request, would be that we say everything about the law, but we reserve the right to deny an application if there is any violations. And the way that we come about the violation would be possibly court of law, or for us to look straight at law and say, "Look, we have a city attorney here, we have staff here, we see this is a direct violation, we've done a legal analysis, and here's the law," because we do it all the time, "we bring back new things before the city and say," like with the, with the last one of the agenda items, "here's the law, here's where we're not consistent." So we can always, that, that's something we do all the time. So are we always putting ourselves in liability when we have, there is a law, and it's not being followed? But I'm concerned with the liability of us waiting for some random person to file said lawsuit. It just feels like we're just never gonna be able to deny an application, because we're waiting for the magical court of law, who I will say, from my end of the world, I'm in the court, I'm a practicing attorney in court all the time, and I don't see these claims coming up all the time, where, "Oh, I was offended, I was at the park," and I think that, a lot of people don't even have the encouragement to file these lawsuits. This stuff just happens. So my concern is, what do we do when that happens? That's why I'm like, when I saw that, I was like, "Ugh, let's protect." Maybe you have something, I appreciate that.
Real quick, some background on why we're doing this. There was very racist language in one of the events that we funded in their script last year. It was very, very offensive. I mean, people wouldn't even read it, because it was so offensive. So it is happening, I mean, we had someone here sit and say, "Those people." So there is racism out there, and we just have to make sure that as a city, it's not something we support, because to just turn a blind eye means we're okay with it. I don't wanna deal with it, it's too much, and I'll take it head-on. Like, if no one else wants to, that's fine, but I will always take on racism head-on, and I have no qualms about that.
Katie?
So this is the language from the grant proposal, or the grant guidelines, excuse me, and just for simplicity's sake, I've called up clean version, so we don't see all of the other changes, just to keep ourselves focused. So to be eligible for consideration for funding, the applicant must, and then we'll scroll down to E6, which is what we're talking about, "Use any grant funds awarded solely for the purpose of pursuing the project's scope, which must not include conduct in violation of any federal, state, or local anti-discrimination law. If the city council determines that a grantee, through its officers, employees, volunteers, or agents, has violated any such anti-discrimination law in the course of carrying out the grant-funded project, the grantee may not be considered for a grant reimbursement or future grant funding." What this does is focuses the attention on your intention that these grant funds only be used for the purpose that you're providing, and you are not providing those grant funds for the purpose of carrying out any discriminatory conduct, right? You're only providing the money for the event, or the parade, or what have you. So it really focuses on that, and says if you deviate and use our money to act in a discriminatory way, you have taken yourself out of eligibility for reimbursement or for being considered in the future. So keep, keep that in mind, because now I'm gonna scroll down to where the scripts are considered. And we had this line that said the contents of the script could be used by the council for future grant determination. And if you like the language above, I would suggest we take out this second sentence, because I don't wanna make it seem as if the script is the only thing that you might consider in terms of future grant eligibility or reimbursement. It could be any type of conduct, right? Not just the script, so let's not limit it to the script. So this is another way to get to a solution to the problem that you're seeing here, and I don't know if it's exactly what you want, but it's something that we can work on together as we sit here.
I'm sitting here going, "Hallelujah." I should've shut up a long time ago and let our city, our interim city attorney, city attorney, thank you, that's amazing, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilman Orland, is this?
I'm very comfortable with the wording the way it is, thank you.
And I also agree in striking the recommendation that you recommended as well. The last part of this last, point seven, it isn't just the scripts, oftentimes it's what is ad-libbed sometimes, or someone who presents potentially a script that has no intention. I don't know of anyone that has done that, but in the future, should it happen, that someone presents a script with the intent to not abide by that? And I agree with LUD, thank you for the work that you did on this. Having a heads-up to know what to anticipate is always better than being blindsided, no matter what it is. So I do appreciate that advice, man.
Just very quickly, I am definitely comfortable with this language. I was a little uncertain about the perception that we were considering ourselves to be the be-all and end-all, and the decision-makers about it, and this is a little bit more focused on the law, anti-discrimination law, which is, I think, where it needed to be. So I feel good about it, because it still does do what it's supposed to do.
Councilman Orland?
I'm good.
Okay. Just so you know.
If I could ask freely for just one more minute, it was very helpful that Councilmember Pearson pointed out a few typos. There are one or two more that staff would like the leeway to fix, so if when you make a motion, you would consider granting staff the authority to fix any non-substantive, just typographical errors, so it looks good before it goes to publication, we would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
One more thought, now with your clarification on number seven, with six being all-inclusive, do you even need seven at all? Because six would cover that just as well, just a thought.
You mean, you mean seven, yeah. I like to keep it in there, I like to keep them both, I think it's clean this way.
Karen, did you have?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, first of all, there was a couple of questions addressed during the last item that I want to make sure that we address. And then also on top of this, so the current, the process in the guidelines is, it provides guidelines for city staff to go in and score and determine if applications meet all of the requirements of the grant application, and then the council has the discretion to fund, approve, or deny without making any type of findings on the projects. So really, these guidelines is what staff we use, that then we present to LUD, and then LUD makes a recommendation to the city council. And so all these items here, you actually, every, every year, make determinations on how you're going to fund them based upon the five council members. So I want to just make sure, like, city staff will bring you some scores, LUD does not have to follow those scores, neither does, does the city council. So the next item was, as relates to deadlines, we actually hold fast to deadlines. One year, actually, someone sent an email, and they showed us that it was to the wrong email address, and so we accepted that as a result of them demonstrating proof that they had just misspelled, and I think it was just, just a mistake. So we don't allow anything to come in after the deadline that we put out there. We will also, like last time, we actually videotaped a Zoom conference, so that people knew how they could fill out the application. the application. And we're always willing to, to work with them as a result. And then there was another question brought up during the last time, Councilmember Mendoza, that I don't think I've covered. But I wanted to ask Councilmember Pearson one question as it relates to insurance. Is, is the reassurance requirement when they apply, they need to demonstrate that they have insurance? Or is the requirement that they would not receive reimbursement unless they demonstrated that they had insurance? So there, if, and let me explain, one, there would be a cost prior to having an event, and you don't know if you're going to receive, versus the other one would be, okay, you're having an event, then you'll need to demonstrate that you've provide, provided liability.
Yeah, my initial thought was the latter.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification. And then Councilmember Mendoza, you brought up an item, and I just, I'm forgetting exactly what it was.
No, I think that we, we need to define economic development with the explicit purpose of business promotion and institutional advertisement for the city of Brentwood. And, I mean, I think we've talked about this one. I think we talked about it. It's hard because one of the events has been brought to my attention a few times, that it is not an economic development item, and we fund it every year, which is the Turkey Trot. And I just, I don't know how to deal with those things. When people come up to me, they're like, that's not economic development. The mall isn't even open. And we're giving all of this money to the Turkey Trot when it could be used for economic development. So how, how do we deal with that, that? Because I'm, sometimes I'm stuck. I don't even know what to say. I'm like, it's our schools, you know?
So it's a great question, Councilmember Mendoza. And a year ago at LUD, we had a long discussion related to this. So although the grant, the, the city council can add additional restrictions of what type of events you want to fund, your Prop 218, what's in the code for this institutional marketing, it doesn't say that you have to do that, it just is providing you the opportunity to do it across the board. My recommendation would be, don't make a change this year, and that we work with and, and we inform that there might be a change in coming years. And one of the ways that you might do that is that your events are not truly fundraisers. For example, most economic development events are not 100% fundraiser events. And we've, over the years, funded a variety of, of events. Also, as the city council, one of the ideas as part of this grant program was that you fund a project and that you slowly start reducing, so that they can stand on their own two feet through sponsorships after they demonstrate the viability of, of that event. And that could be partially done through LUD's discussion, through this year's competitive grant. But my recommendation is, I think that there's organizations out there that assume they're going to get some funding, maybe not the same as last year. And then through next year's process, we can always add additional language if the direction is to hear. And my, I think Abraham has worked a lot on grants, and we can come up with some ideas that might help restrict a person to apply that's just purely looking for fundraising versus a true economic development event for the community.
Okay. And there's no further discussion? Do I have a motion on this item?
Okay. So I move to adopt the resolution, adopting, updating the Economic Development Grant Program guidelines with our edits to, do you want me to say the edits? The edits to our, yeah, as shown on the screen, and with, and you can exercise some discretion as to typos and things along those lines that are not substantiative.
And just to make sure, you're including the, the request by Councilmember Pearson to include an insurance requirement?
Yes, we will also include the insurance requirement. Oh, and authorizing staff to finalize the grant application. Thank you.
Is that with also making any edits and corrections without council direction?
Okay, we have a first?
Second.
And second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is unanimous. Moving into item H5. This item is consideration of an ordinance amending the Brentwood Municipal Code as it relates to the Park and Recreation Commission. Bruce Multer, Director of Parks and Recreation, will present. Bruce?
All right. Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. So this item is regarding the Brentwood Municipal Code as it relates to Chapter 2.46 of the Park, the Parks and Recreation Commission. The origin of this ordinance dates back to 1999, when the Parks and Recreation was part of an independent special district and then moved into the city. As such, certain areas of the ordinance do not fit with the city council's city manager form of government, where the commission is an advisory role to the city council. So most recently, this agenda item came up as a request from Councilmember Pearson to look at certain areas of the municipal code, and specifically the code as it relates to the Parks and Recreation Commission, to review and update any areas of the code that are not enforceable. So staff has reviewed these areas of the ordinance with the city attorney's office, and recommends certain modifications to Section 2.46020, the powers and duties section of the code. So I'm going to be reading through these, and these are on page 169 and 170 of the staff report as well, the packet that has a table. So I'm going to go through each one of these sections. So the first one is Section E. The Park and Recreation Commission may, may seek funds from private county, state, and federal sources for park and recreation programs and facilities. And the commission is also authorized to receive funds, devices, bequests, endowments, or other donations of money and property for parks and recreation on behalf of the city.
Excuse me, Mr. Multer, is it possible to put the chart on the screen for the public to see?
Yes. Darren, could you help me with that again?
Yep, we're, we're working on it.
Thank you.
So it's, it's page 169 and 170 of the staff report has this table. So I'll keep going while they pop that up. So the second sentence of that Section E is what is intended to be deleted. So the reason being for that, the commission is not in a position to receive monetary or real property donations on behalf of the city. Such decisions belong to the city manager or the city council, and such decisions require the participation of other commissions, possibly, such as the Planning Commission, which by law must consider new real property acquisitions. So that's Section E. Moving on to Section I. The Park and Rec Commission shall advise the city manager in recruiting and appointing the director of Parks and Recreation, and shall by making a report to the city manager, be a part of the yearly evaluation of the director. This section is to be deleted, and the reason being, under the city council's city manager form of government, the city manager is the personnel officer for the city, and is responsible for the recruitment, appointment, and the evaluation of all the department directors. And moving on to Section K. The Park and Rec Commission shall, shall establish rates, charges, and deposits for the use of any and all recreation and park facilities. This section again is to be deleted. The reason being, the city council is the one that establishes the rates and charges and deposits for city facilities as part of the yearly cost allocation plan. This power does not rest with the commissions. Then Section L. Parks and Recreation Commission shall hold public meetings on recreation programming and facility usage, and conduct investigations and surveys for the purpose of obtaining facts and data concerning recreation programs to assure the provisional programs designed to meet the needs and interests of the citizens. Here, the word investigations is to be taken out, and the reason being, under the city manager form of government, advisory committees such as the Park and Recreation Commission are not empowered with the authority to, to direct investigations. And then finally, Section N. The Park and Rec Commission shall advise the city council on the subject of recreation facility master planning and development. The commission shall implement and revise as needed the comprehensive park recreation and trail master plan to ensure preservation of open space, development of park facilities, and park maintenance operations and standards, and creation of recreation programs. Here, the second sentence here is recommended to be deleted, and the reason being, the city council adopted the city's Parks, Trails, and Recreation Master Plan, and since the commission is advisory to the city council, it is the council that actually adopts and implements the planning documents, and the commission is in an advisory role regarding these planning documents. So those are the conclusion to the ordinance as it relates to those areas that are not enforceable. And then in addition to that, staff is seeking direction this evening to come back to city council with any further review, and this is at the discretion of the city council. Any further review will require additional time and analysis. That is not part of the ordinance changes this evening. This additional ordinance review could include procedural changes to make the ordinance consistent with other commissions, as well as any further review of the scope and powers of duties to possibly simplify or provide clarity to reflect that the commission is in an advisory role to the city council. So that is the completion of my staff report and available for any questions.
Clarifying questions of staff at this time. Seeing none, at this time, we will open public comments.
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. We'll take public comment in the chambers, followed by Zoom. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We receive no written public comments on this item. I have no speaker cards, and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
At this time, we'll close public comments. Move into council discussion. Councilmember Pearson?
Okay. So thanks for allowing me to, thanks for bringing this back to us. Also, for the diligence in getting this. I know it's only one, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring up Damian, who was our former city attorney. I think he was really excited about these changes. And so we're on his behalf. I'm so excited. We're making some changes to the municipal code. I know he wanted us to bring it to, you know, as close to us bringing things current. So for this item, I really like all the revisions. I would add a couple of things, because I want to make sure that we are not just, like, patchwork quilting 2.46.020. And in the staff report, it asks for any other suggestions. So I would like to make the following suggestion as to letter J. The current letter J, and I don't know if we can actually bring up the municipal code, but the current letter J, I'm going to pull it up so that I can actually read it. Current letter J says, the parks, the Park and Rec Commission shall establish rules and regulations governing the conduct of recreation programs, protection of property and activities of persons in all parks, so that all residents may enjoy them for leisure time activities. The staff report did discuss, this was conflicting with municipal code, Section 7.02.020A3, that says, the director shall establish and adopt and amend guidelines, policies, rules, and regulations for use of facilities within the boundaries of the city of Brentwood service area. That section is as to special use permits. So I thought, so that it can be very clear. In Section J, I'd recommend the following language. And I would recommend, I'm sorry, I don't have this typed out, that J be amended to say the following. The Parks and Rec Commission may advise and, I can't even read my, recommend to the director of Parks and Rec rules and regulations that they may, in their power, use to govern the conduct of recreation programs, protection of product, property. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I get in trouble in court all the time when we have interpreters. Yeah, it says, the Parks and Recreation Commission may advise and recommend to the director of Parks and Recreation rules and regulations that the director may implement in their power to govern. And then it's the conduct of, so it'd be the remainder of that sentence. So that would be my, my one ask. The other, since the agenda did say this is for Section 2.46, since we're in 2.46, I would ask that we use non-binary language in our section. In Subsections 2.4... I'm so sorry. 2.46.060F, it says his or her. I would ask that we use non-binary language to say either them, they, or their. And then in Section 2.46.100, there is another section that says his or her, and it doesn't leave room, we talk about equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging, to have non-binary language. So instead of gender pronouns of his or her, I would ask that we say they or them, and we use their.
Can I just note that we don't generally make changes unless we hear from a majority of you, but there was a lot of information, and we wanted to make sure we got it down correctly. So please don't think we're trying to influence the vote of any council members. We're just trying to document it so everybody can see what we're talking about.
How is council regarding these changes? Good. Thank you. Are we up to date on the changes recommended? Are there any further conversation regarding this? Do I have a motion on this item?
Okay. As detailed in the staff report, I move to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the Brentwood Municipal Code, Section 2.46, Parks and Rec Commission, and also direct staff to the following additional amendments. Should I just do the second part?
No, so I'm sorry. So if you want to include these amendments for 2.46, that's great. The second part is really if you have further amendments, as Bruce was talking about, to other non-legally required changes. So it, it would be great if you want to provide your direction as to the ordinance right now.
Okay. So as detailed in the staff report, I move to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Brentwood Municipal Code, Chapter 2.46. This would include the addition of Section J. Is that correct? Excuse me.
And the changes to the gender.
And the changes to the gender. Yes, so the non-binary language.
Okay, we have a first?
Second.
Okay.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Brentwood amending Brentwood Municipal Code, Chapter 2.46, Park and Recreation Commission.
Wow, that was fast.
That was.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving into...
There's a second part to this ask, and that is those best practice changes. Would you like us to come back with those to make the commission consistent with the other commissions as far as duties, scope, procedure requirements, et cetera? That's not included in here with changes, but we want your direction, so we can come back with those if you'd like.
I think it makes sense to make all of them consistent.
So I'll make a second. I move to direct staff to the following additional amendments to the Park and Rec Commission ordinance, to use staff time and attention to look at where we can make things consistent and bring it back for, for council's discussion and possible either direction or a vote on it.
A second.
First and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Passes, we will move into item I. And do we have any new agenda item requests?
I have one. Haven't done one in a while, so here I am. Thank you to Katie for helping me with this language, but I got, I was a real geeked-out attorney when our last agenda item came out, and I really enjoy looking at Brentwood Municipal Code and making amendments. It's like HoVita with numbers and money. It's like Tony with police stuff. It's like Susano with our age community, and Joe with the entire city. So our age-friendly communities. So this is, it was exciting for me. I spent like hours. And when I looked at it, I saw that there needed to be several amendments. So my future agenda item request would be to have an omnibus, omnibus review of outdated areas of the municipal code by staff, just that, of, of the municipal code areas that need changes and review and updates.
So that's certainly comprehensive. Yes, thank you very much. When you come back and explain that next meeting, you may want to give direction on certain titles or chapters just because this is such a large municipal code, and that could be a very big project or a very small project. So maybe if you can think about that between now and the next meeting, it'll help your colleagues better understand the scope of your request.
And actually, I can add a little scope for now.
Sure.
Right now, I'd like to, because it's, municipal code is huge. And my review was of section one and section two, and I like to take it in subparts. So, I'll, title, I'm sorry, title one and title two. So my specific request right now is that we focus on title one and title two to make those amendments right now, to take on the small steps.
Okay, does staff have clear direction on that request?
Yes, so we'll take a look at those title sections in particular, and if any council members have some specifics, send them our way. But another consideration you could do is create an ad hoc committee of two to look at the municipal code and make some recommendations. That way, we're sure we're getting the committee's direction and forwarding it to the city council, so nothing's being missed.
Anybody want to nerd out with me?
We could come back with a committee consideration since it's not on tonight's agenda, but if that, something to consider. And since you're making future agendas, that could be one.
I can add that to my future agenda item request, is that staff also present to us the idea of a committee to review this as well.
Councilmember Pearson looks so disappointed in the suggestion for a subcommittee. I'm sorry, vice mayor.
Thank you. Recently, the city of Emeryville dealt with the same scourge that some of the rest of us have with hate speech. Recently also, Walnut Creek had in-person hate speech. And I keep going back to this topic, and I'm sorry. But Emeryville, they have a prohibition for public commenters using threatening profane or abuse language that disrupts the orderly conduct of meetings. And I don't think we're doing enough to figure out how we can stop hate speech in its tracks without violating the First Amendment. They actually have it in their code. It's like, the policy gives council the authority to cut off speakers who veer away from sharing opinions on city operations or social issues to make abusive harassing remarks. So I'd like to even potentially have staff connect with the city of Emeryville, because I called and actually didn't get anywhere. I left a message and never got a return call. So maybe staff can find out what that code looks like and get more information on what they're doing that they can get away with it, because they cut these people off. They didn't let them get into this really racist, horrible, threatening comment. And I know we're concerned about freedom of speech, but they are too, and they're getting away with it. So I just want to look into that a little bit deeper. Is that clear?
And is your request limited to Emeryville?
Nope, not if you can find that somewhere else, but I know that they have one in place, so I was trying to make it easier.
We can start with Emeryville, and we can look at when that municipal code was changed, and if there was a staff report.
April 2023.
Okay, and if there's a staff report associated with them, what findings they may have concluded to justify it, so we can certainly look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further new requests? Okay, we'll move into item J1. It is a, to consider a request from councilmember Mendoza related to potential updates to affordable housing ordinance requirements. Councilmember Mendoza.
Hi, so I know we're going to have to go to four buckets when we do this, right? Like, we'll have to move to four buckets if we do this. But currently, we have three buckets of how we get 13% affordable housing from all new developments. And if you look at all of the developments we've been getting, they're all using density bonus, they're all exercising it, and they're building more affordable housing to get their waivers. So if they're exercising it anyway, we should, I think we should get more bang for our buck. Like, so I would like to consider raising it to 20. A lot of the cities that I deal with, like Pleasanton, for example, they're doing 20 now because of the same thing. So I would like to have staff spend time and money updating our ordinance to 20. I'm not sure of what it takes to do that, like, do we need to do a study? Like, what kind of money is involved in that? But I'd like to consider it, because as you saw, we have to get to, I think it is 761 affordable housing units in now less than, well, now about three years. So, I can't think of any other way to do it besides kind of making it happen.
At this time, I'll open public comments on this item.
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment in the chambers followed by Zoom. Remarks are limited to five minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And we receive no written public comments on this item. I do not have any speaker cards, and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion. I do have a question for staff or Alexis. I think that this is an avenue that I think a lot of people are going to be considering, but are there any, based upon our previous discussions, which were long and in-depth, is there some other consequences other than what councilmember Mendoza just discussed, that we should also consider to weigh out the pros and cons of a decision for a change like this?
I'm not sure I can get into the full discussion at this point, because that's not necessarily how it's agendized, but yes, there's a lot that council would need to consider, you know, before they made this policy change. I will point to a staff report we did in 2022 that had a lot of this information laid out to bump it up to 20 at that time. So that, a lot of that information is still relevant if council wanted to look back on that report, and we would bring something similar to that forward. There have been a few changes in the density bonus law that would be a part of that discussion, but I don't think I can get into the nuts and bolts of that tonight necessarily.
Okay, that answered my concern.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Can you explain how HCD may require the economic study?
Sure, so that would be part of the conversation. So there's a little bit of information in the fiscal impact section of the staff report for tonight's future agenda item request. So, AB 1505 requires a feasibility study of increasing affordable housing percentages in certain circumstances. So, one of the things council would want to consider is if the policy they adopted would trigger the need for that feasibility study, or to proactively do a feasibility study in case one were to be required by HCD. So there's a lot of discussion that goes behind that, but the philosophy behind that is for rental housing, not single-family home ownership affordable housing, but for rental housing, HCD considers any requirement above 15% to be a potential constraint. So if you look at Pleasanton's requirements, their 20% is on single-family housing, and their 15% is on their multifamily, probably for that very reason. So, there's a lot to consider. There's, AB 1505 is just one of the pieces of, that there's a cost associated with those feasibility studies, and there's time to do them. But there's also other issues for council to consider about density bonuses in the general plan and all that good stuff.
If council decides to move forward with this, I definitely want to have a discussion on all of this in depth. We don't want any unintended consequences that make it more difficult for our residents to end up where, I think your request is all positive in helping our families. We don't want to do something that is a hurdle instead.
Thank you. I thought you were looking over there. So definitely the point of coming back for full discussion, and I think the impacts and all the unintended consequences are definitely something to look at. In talking about the staff report and its mention of AB 1505, it said an increase in the affordable housing ordinance could meet several of those conditions. So I would like to know more about, how do we know for sure? I mean, it could is so intangible.
Well, whether it meets the conditions depends on what changes council wants to make. So we can provide you a list of that criteria. And that's in that March 22nd, 2022 staff report I mentioned, so there's already some information that we had shared with council.
That council, not this council.
Correct, council in the past, yes. So that's in the agenda management system, so you can look at that for reference, but we would bring that forward. So, when it says could, it just depends on whether council direction creates a program that either immediately triggers those criteria that HCD lays out, or knowing how HCD works, they could interpret it as an issue and want that feasibility study to prove that the ordinance changes do not create an obstruction or a constraint for affordable housing.
And is this something, I don't know if I can ask the question yet, but that other cities could be used as benchmarks, ones that are already doing it?
So we would look to an individualized feasibility study if it is in fact the case that you want to go this direction. But I think we've heard loud and clear that, to the extent there is council interest, you would want a very comprehensive review of these things. So I don't want you to get too far ahead of the agenda item tonight, but what I've heard is you want information on the impacts of any change in this regard, whether or not a feasibility study would in fact be required, and the criteria on which these various consequences would be put in place if the council were to give this direction. So if that sounds about right.
I would support moving forward with that in mind, yeah.
Is that a motion?
I just wanted to say, just as a newer council member, even though I'm almost about to be, you know, more seasoned soon with elections coming up, this conversation was had prior to Tony and I being on council. So I would really like to find out more information about this. And I did, I was privy to watching the council when you all talked about this. I had no idea what the heck you guys were talking about. Now, being on council with different hats, I'd love for you to talk to me like I have, don't understand what the heck you are talking about, and find out more. So again, I support a thorough review of this as well.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to have staff spend time and resources on analyzing the possibility of increasing our inclusionary affordable housing percentages. And we'll look at different things, like you mentioned, the 15% for multifamily, 20% for single-family, and looking at the pros and cons of that action.
Thank you. A little second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving into item J2, consider a request from councilmember Mendoza related to potential updates to the objective design standards.
So we're going to have a workshop on this, I just saw that online coming up soon. But my thing is, before we have the workshop, and I think we had asked for it when we're sitting in the meeting, we want to take our subjective standards that we like and make them all objective if possible. Is, and are we going to be able to do that before the workshop and consider those things? So for example, you know, like, and this one came up the other week, like, our subjective suggests that we have, you know, the green strip at the other side of the sidewalk. But we got a development the other day that doesn't have it, or actually, it hasn't come to us, I saw it in the picture, it doesn't have it. But we like a lot of trees because of the green canopy in Brentwood, and now we're not going to have that because they're not going to have the green strip. So how, I just want to, I want to take our subjectives and make them as objective as possible. And I guess I thought we had talked about that in our meeting, but it doesn't feel like, unless I'm missing something, I'm not sure what's going on in the background, but I feel like something's missing.
So, council hasn't seen any draft work product yet for the permanent objective design standards, so that staff is working on that right now. There's a community workshop coming up where they're going to, our consultants are going to do a presentation and get community feedback about objective design standards and some of the things we talked about at the last council meeting about this. So that's more of a, of course, council is welcome to participate, but that's aimed towards the public who may have no idea what this means or what this topic is about, really to educate them about the project. Then draft objective design standards will be brought to council for that very discussion, right? So we will be presenting a bunch of objective design standards and getting council's feedback on those and what ones they want to add, change, include if they're not already on there. So I don't know that that's lost, it's just you haven't been presented with a work product yet. So, we've had several council discussions and direction about what they want to see in the ODS. And some of our subjective standards in our current residential design guidelines cannot be made objective. They're just not translatable, you can't just do a should to a shall. You know, they're just, because the objective standards, and Katie, tell me if I'm getting too far. I'm getting too far? So, there will be an opportunity for the council to tell us what they think of our initial draft of objective design standards and what is missing and what is added. For all of the residential design guidelines that we can make objective, those will be in there. There's just some that just are not translatable because objective standards have to be so precise, okay? It has to be written in a very specific type of way.
Are we only doing housing, or are we also? And the reason I ask about commercials, because there's a objective, there's a design standard in commercial. It says, "No fast food ordering boxes should be facing residents." Like, it's very clear in there, but then we had staff come with an item with the ordering box facing a resident, right? So, how do we, I guess, I'm just, is, can our commercial, do they fall under the same guidelines of subjective and objective?
Not according to state law.
So we have to make those objective as well?
No.
We do not?
So, the drive to have objective design standards for residential project is driven, products is driven by state law. It's driven by the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330 and some other laws that say we can only enforce objectively written, non-subjective standards on residential. So if we want objective standards for commercial, they want them to be written in a much more objective, black and white way? That's possible, it's not, it's just not driven, it's not motivated by the same issues, and it's not, the stakes are not the same as if we didn't have objective standards for residential, if that makes sense. So that would be something the city opted to do as a policy direction or decision. It's not something state is compelling us to do.
Okay, so then that sounds like it's something more up to me when I'm reviewing a project here, pull up the standards and go, what's the rationale for not following the standards so that we can understand it?
Yeah, so this isn't really on the agenda tonight, but I think it's important to remember that there are design guidelines. So the commercial design guidelines are not written in the same force and effect that an ordinance or a zoning standard would have. So that's something to consider going forward.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll withdraw this, and I think what I need to do is go through the housing residential objective standards. And then when we have our meeting, the ones that I, you know, can we make these subjective is kind of what you're asking, we do it at that point.
Correct, and lead will have a meeting about this, council will have a meeting about this, the community will have a meeting with a different focus. So there's, it's March, we just initiated this, so there's a lot more to come.
Okay, perfect, then I will withdraw, and I will wait, and we will do it in that fashion. Thank you.
Great, well, at this time, I just need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.